Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. The date is June 5th, 2023, the time is now 7:02 PM. I call to order a meeting of Haverty Grace Mayor and City Council. Roll call. Council President Ring Socker.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Jones wanted me to convey to everybody that she apologizes for missing her first full meeting, but she had a previously scheduled family meeting months and months and months in advance before she even filed for reelection, so we wish her the best, and I know she's watching this live, so we'll see you next meeting, Councilmember Jones. Okay, everyone, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could kindly ask everybody to please remain standing, as it gives me a great pleasure to call upon Reverend Dr. Lynn Humphries-Russ, of Hopeful United Methodist Church, and we appreciate being here with us this evening, thank you.
Thanks for having me, it's wonderful to bring the word of God here. Will you all please bow your heads and pray with me? Almighty God, you know that our world is dark and chaotic. You know our human hearts search in the darkness for your light. We gather tonight as council members, public servants, and citizenry to look to the angels of our better natures as the work of our city is done. Move each person who speaks, each person who is challenged with this work tonight, to look to their better natures, so that your will is done. May the world of justice and peace that you have promised prevail in all that is done tonight. Bless all who are here, and all the work they do. Your people throughout our city pray to you by many names, Almighty God, tonight, I pray to you in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your time, it's good to see you. We're gonna go to item number five, Approval of the Minutes. This is gonna be item A, City Council Meeting Minutes, May 15th, 2023. Council have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, second by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City Council Meeting Minutes, May 15th, 2023, carry five zero and affirmative. Item B, City Council, Closed Session Meeting Minutes, May 15th, 2023, motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City Council Meeting Minutes, carry five zero and affirmative. Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens, we will be making a couple of agenda changes on the ordinances. Letter C, which is an ordinance concerning amending portions of Chapter 2 of 5 zoning commercials industrial for first reading, we will strike that from this meeting because Tim Bursey, I can't make it this evening. And at the end, we will be adding a closed session that we will not come back from, so I'll read the official document before we leave, and then it'll be fully recorded, so we're gonna go ahead and close the meeting, and then we'll come back and go over the minutes at the next meeting, so.
Thank you very much, Council President. Council, any objections? Okay. Okay, we're gonna go to item six, Comments from Citizens. This is the part of this evening's agenda. If you're here to speak on any item that is on the city agenda, now's the time to speak. But also, if you're here because you want to speak on another matter of city business that is not on the agenda, now's also the time to speak as well. Normally what I do, if anybody went online to fill out a speaker form, or filled one out here when they got to City Hall, what I'll do is I'll call on those citizens first to speak. And then when I go through all the forms, if you're here and you wish to speak anyway, just raise your hand, and I'll call on you, and come up to the podium and speak. What's that? Yeah. Did you fill a form out?
I wasn't told I was able to fill out a form online, I was told to show up here at 7 by year eight, Adam.
Okay, your name Brian Myers?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I have a form for you. Well, come on up and speak, sir, come on up. You got it.
Can I have our kids come up here, please? All the residents of Erie Street, can you please make yourselves present and say aye? Come on up at the front, kids up front, please. Okay, my name's Brian Myers, been a resident of Haverty Grace for the past 14 years, and then prior to that, from 1972 to 1986. So I grew up here, I went through the school system here, I've lived technically half my life here.
Welcome.
Thank you. I did move away, I've lived in East Baltimore, West Baltimore, Perry Hall, all kinds of places around Baltimore, I've lived on residential streets, and by far, I have never, in my 55 years, ever seen the traffic problems and the dangerous traffic on a small residential street, ever, than we have on our small block of 800 Erie Street. I was here, when I moved here, the traffic pattern was different. We had incoming traffic into Haverty Grace for Haverty Grace residents to come through our street, our small residential street, which is made for two cars, car parking on each side, and one car going down at a time, not two, you can't fit them, okay? Now, I was here probably eight years ago, with some residents, and we petitioned not to have the traffic pattern back to two-way pattern. And everybody said, "Well, well, this is, the street used to be like that, and we have to relieve the traffic at Ohio Street, and we can't have the traffic here, we can't have the traffic on these county routes, we can't have the traffic on the state routes." But nobody took into consideration our city route, that's our city street. You represent city residents, and for the eight, past eight years, it's been nothing but misery, headaches, danger, property damage, like you can't believe. I myself, in the last eight years, have spent over $15,000 in property damage, okay? And how many people here have had property damage? How many? How many more than once? I've been about, yeah, about four or five times? We're fed up. We're fed up, we're tired, the school's getting ready to come out, we have at least a thousand cars coming back and forth of our street every single day, we're a little tiny residential street, a little neighborhood, of families and little children that want to play outside without worrying about dying. And I'm tired of it. Schools get ready to let out, in what, two weeks? In two weeks, our kids are gonna be out there every hour of every day, and we're gonna, which one of my, which one of my kids do you want to martyr before you make a change? Honest to God. I know people have been talking about this for a while, "Oh, well, we should do this." It's not our city, we're residents of this city, it's your job. As a matter of fact, in your bio, it says, I don't know exactly how it says it, but it's, "I love this city because it's a great place to raise my children and be safe." It's not safe for me, it's not safe for us to raise our children on our street, and it hasn't been for eight years. We're fed up, we're tired, we're tired, my wife, I just bought her a new $30,000 minivan. Just last week, the second mirror's been broken off of it. I had, you know, my Harley Davidson, which is my pride and joy, $4,500 worth of damage in four months in the shop. We're tired of it. We want the street put back to how it was before, one-way traffic coming in, and zero traffic out the Route 40. This is not an on-ramp, the Route 40, our residential street's not an on-ramp, the Route 40, it's dangerous. I don't understand what you're waiting for, you know the police, ask the police, they'll tell you, ask the rescue people in this city, they'll tell you. I invite any one of you, any one of you to come sit on my porch between 4 o'clock and 6 o'clock, any given evening, and see the hell that we have to go through. If you could park on the street, and be careful getting out of your car, 'cause they'll hit you, they'll run you right over, they don't care, 'cause when they turn that corner, they hit the gas, and all they think is Route 40's up here, they don't look out for our kids, they don't care about our property. Tractor trailers, it's gotten so bad that the GPS units now program our street as a roundabout to get onto Route 40, that's how much traffic travels down our street, it's unacceptable. And I gotta, I gotta make this point. Forty, what, back in 1972, when I was a kid here, okay? I remember sitting in the back of my mom's car, sweating my butt off, waiting at Jimmy Carter Days with the even odd license plates, getting gas, okay? You know the intersections, the same intersections are exactly the same when I was that sweaty little kid in the backseat than they are today. Where's our tax money, and who's in charge of infrastructure? Who's in charge? It's no excuse for the streets to be the same, 40 intersections, the same 40-plus years, and, and your resolution to the problem, "Oh, let's just send everybody down our street." I can't even get home from work, I can't even get out from work, I gotta sit there and literally wait for a whole shot to take off, and hopefully, I'll get through the gauntlet before somebody flies down the street the other way. I hear strangers come down my street, I hear them yelling out the window, "This is ridiculous", I heard it twice tonight, perfect strangers, I'm walking across the street, and they stop like, "Is this street always like this?" I'm like, "Every day, welcome to Erie Street." It's unacceptable, something needs to be changed before school gets out, and I know it's an immediate request, but it's an immediate problem, it's desperate, our children deserve better. Citizens, your citizens, the people that you're charged with representing us, not the people going north on Route 40 to Cecil County, New Jersey, wherever the hell they're headed, they don't live here. The majority of people that travel that road do not live here, your responsibility is to us. That's all I've got to say.
Well, Mr. Myers, I appreciate you coming tonight, I can tell by the passion in your voice that this is a problem that has long needed to be addressed. Now, is everybody with you an Erie Street resident?
Yes.
Don't sit down yet, 'cause I have a couple things I want to say, all right?
If there's a backup on 95, forget about it, can't get through at all. Let's see what he has.
So, a couple things. Hopefully, this evening, you'll go home happy, because I prepared an executive order to declare a state of emergency on 800 block of Erie Street.
Thank God.
I want to give a quick two-minute background, before I start going about the process on how it's gonna look moving forward. I was on the council in 2011-ish, I think, when we, the city passed a resolution to, to convert it to exit off of 40. Not a problem. When I became mayor, we were having a lot of issues with traffic at Ohio Street, if you don't know where Ohio Street, I'm talking about the Pizza Hut, Royal Farms intersection, and the state kept saying, you know, "Well, you done took two roads off of, you know, without access to 40," and we, there's a lot of issues going with the state and the county, and we said, and they specifically said, "You made Erie Street unaccessible to 40." We thought if we opened it up, they would work with us, saw some other problems, the city never, intent, you know, the city never contacted Google Maps or Apple Maps, and said, "Here, take this, we thought it'd be a quiet little opening, get the state off," well, here we are, eight years later, state hadn't done anything to help us. We have formed Truck Traffic Safety, we put signs up, no trucks over five tons, the trucks are ignoring the signs. And then about three weeks ago, I came into City Hall, talked to Adam, who you can talk to, Mr. Myers, and I said, "This has to stop." I'm on Route 40, and I look at that road, and I see box trucks backing up, tractor, I mean, they're not watching the signs, I've talked to some council members, we're coming up with a plan, however, it just was a coincidence that on, was it Thursday or Friday you called Adam?
Thursday.
And I'm glad you're all here tonight, because under the charter of your city, I do have the authority to declare a state of emergency.
Thank God.
For 30 days. So there's two things I'm gonna sign tonight, right in front of you. One's gonna be a state of emergency, that's gonna identify the 800 block as a dangerous street to life and safety and property, I can do that. The second thing is going to make it exit off of 40 only, no access from Juniata to 40. I have to advertise, I have to advertise a pattern change for 10 days before that takes effect, so I'm gonna sign it tonight, and probably write down June 15th. And on June 15th, my Department of Public Works will come out, and we'll do the necessary equipment we need at the end of Erie Streets, so people can't access 40. But you have to know, the next step is this, though, I can only temporarily do that as a state of emergency, two things, three things could happen. To make a permanent change, like, to keep that permanent, needs to be codified by the council, which means it has to be a law. So I'm buying 30 days for the council to work to come up with either a different pattern, the same pattern, or something. Now, I can only declare a state of emergency once, for the state emergency to be renewed for another 30 days, just in case we don't have it passed within 30 days, council can renew my, my executive order for 30 more days, and keep that exit off of 40 only. Where no actions taken, and after 30 days, it reverts back to what it is now, but I don't think that will happen. I'm just letting you know, my executive order doesn't permanently solve it, but it gives you immediate relief within 10 days. And then the council will, will have, whatever it is, when we get, council gets together, it'd be the Street Traffic Safety Commission, it'll be the Public Safety Commission chaired by Councilmember Boyer, it'll be public, you'll know about it, follow your council meetings, follow your council meetings on, on our Facebook page or website in July and August, and you'll see when we introduce it, if you want to say anything else, but what I'm saying is, it has to be a law to keep it permanent. My executive, my executive order will probably last June 15th to July 15th, and if nothing's, if no law's passed by then, council can renew it for 30 more days. But we're gonna fix it, we're gonna fix it tonight, I'm sorry it's turned into this, it seems like every truck and every car that gets off of I-95 that there's an accident, their, their Apple Maps, Google Maps tell them, "Take this road right here." And we've tried, signage, another problem is, we don't have enough space between 155 and your street to get enough signage to keep telling trucks to go to, out Seago, so it's a mess, I'm sorry this has happened, I'm sorry you had to live this way, I take the blame, but we're gonna fix it, and it'll never be that way again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna sign it, I'm gonna sign it right now.
I'll sign it, the sign will come up the next minute or two.
Who party, 850?
On 250?
No, I know.
The first year I moved here, I had to grab Mason off the corner because a guy came around Juniata and ran over the side.
I directed traffic today, I stopped it and let the, 'cause it was a van coming through about, who party?
I'm getting ready to talk.
Was it on the side street? Can't just park and log it down the street.
Okay, I will still take speakers and... Diane? Name and address, please.
Diane Kramer, 853 Erie Street.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just have a question, is, if this does not get passed as a law within the 60 days, is it a possibility of them putting speed bumps in the road just to slow these people down, because I'm telling you, flying down that street, a little puppy just got hit yesterday, right in front of our house, and the people didn't even stop, so, speed bumps, something, if it doesn't get passed as a law, just to slow them down, and maybe that'll deter them to go another way. Something, please.
Well, go ahead, Council President.
I can personally give you commitment from the council that it's going to pass.
Thank you.
And, we can probably look into speed bumps as well.
Okay.
All right, I've got little kids too, and I understand, I know the heartache, I came here to Haverty Grace when I was 16, graduated from Haverty Grace High School, I know the gentleman out there speaking in passing, but he's very good friends with my brother-in-law, but I know, I know the heartache out there, I can't 100% give you a commitment from the council, but I'm pretty sure it's gonna pass.
Yeah, I mean, just getting them on the bus in the morning, just cars, just fly around the corner.
I have personally, I have personally lobbied, if I may, the issue, the issue isn't necessarily the city, and the city changing that back and forth, we're really hamstrung by the state and by the federal government, by, believe it or not, the Hayden Bridge pass, that's what gets us, because you can pay $20 a year, and you cross the Hayden Bridge, or I could pay $8 every time to go across the 95 Bridge, what fool wouldn't pay $20 a year? So what people do is they come down the hill, shoot right up, and they hop right on, because they're going, going home. And I've lobbied it over and over and over again with our delegates in Annapolis, I've spoken with, with District One, Dr. Federal, Andy Harris, thank you, I've spoken with him, and it's just, I keep on getting the same stories, "Well, it's a different fund." Well, you know, I work for the government, I know that we can fix that, we can make the same fund, we can fix, I understand that, you know, it's a different, you know, you know, different pocket, but, you know, money's fungible, we can figure that out, but until then, we're gonna, we're gonna fix this for you, okay?
And we're also gonna get you a sign that says, "Erie Street ain't for sissies," all right? Erie Street's not, Erie Street's not for sissies. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say, one time I was playing outside with my friends, and I was going to this field I have in the back, and this car came like flying down the road, and there was like kids in front of it, and they would not move out of the way, and it was just, yeah, it was crazy, 'cause the car was like coming, and then they just, they just moved into the road.
Well, hopefully that won't happen again, so, give us about 10 days, and we'll have it fixed. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night, be safe.
You know, it says somewhere in the First Amendment about petitioning your government for redress of grievances, sir.
One more, one, one last thing, promise, and this is, I'm trying to, I want, I want to take the wins where we could get them, and you guys have been great, and, you know, this is, this is, this is awesome, it's everything we've been looking for. You said that the One Direction would be coming from 40 towards Juniata, right?
Yes, sir.
While you guys are out there, I spoke to EJ about it, and I had spoken to the council before too, when we come down the street from Erie going towards Juniata, we have this, we have this small area where we cannot see to our left of the, around the corner going towards where the bridge is at, where the stop sign is at, so we have two stop signs. They don't have stop signs going north and south on Juniata, and so they're able to pass by, and when we come out, we have to kind of come out really far before we can see if anybody's coming. So while you guys are out there, if it's possible to take a look to see if there's a way that maybe you can add two more stop signs that give us the opportunity to have them slow down so we can come out, or see if there's something that could be done about the parking to give us more space to see, 'cause if they park too close to the corner, we really can't see anything until sometimes... And they're right there with us.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Boyer.
These are items, these are items that have been brought up to Street and Traffic Safety, things that we're working with DPW is, because the sightline, part of it, there's some bushes in the way, or in a couple of them.
That's on the other side, the other side has the bushes, and we have this, we have this parking situation where...
Right, so we've, the, I think enforcement is going to be talking to the homeowner to ask them to trim down the bushes, we have a couple of places like this around town where we have bushes that impede the sight, and then also from there, look at increasing the amount of, for the yellow curb, to make it so that nobody parks there. So those are the things that have been discussed in Street and Traffic Safety, and recommendations go to the mayor's office, so, okay?
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we get his name and address for the record?
Sir, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just, you name an address, just for the reference for the record, so.
First name Ricardo? Sure, first name Ricardo, R-I-C-A-R-D-O, last name Marrero, M-A-R-R-E-R-O, and you said address? 851 Erie Street.
Great, thank you very much. Call for Joseph Smith. Good evening, former councilmember Joseph Smith, how are you this evening?
Good evening, actually, if I may, could I defer to speak after the ladies from Accretates?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Did I say your last name correctly, Felling? Did I say your last name correctly? Mrs. Felling, okay. Good evening, and welcome to the meeting. Good evening and welcome to the meeting. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes. Karen Felling. I'm at three fifty seven Green Street, Havity Grace.
Welcome.
Some consider me a newbie. I've only been here two and a half years. But I have a history of moving a lot. Let's just say, I won't go into detail and bore everybody. But I'm here to say, I love Havity Grace. I just wanted to say, we're here to speak upon the issue about the parking issues, you know, thing going on. So, with that being said, I just wanted to add my two cents, so to speak, that I think others that don't see the side that we see what would happen if we are having less parking spaces than we already do, because it already is a problem on Washington Street, excuse me. I visit Crazy Hair Salon. Yeah, I get my hair done there too. But, because I'm only two blocks away, I'll go up and visit everybody. And I can tell you for a fact, there are, you see, family members coming in with a parent, loved one, whatever, that are elderly. And they help them in, help them sit down. Then when they're, you know, done getting their hair done, whatever, they come back to get them. These are not people that can take a shuttle from the other side end of town or, or park two blocks away or whatever, because there's no parking for them. So, that, that's my input on this. I mean, I, I see enough of that. Granted, I am a senior too. But, I mean, as far as the elderly people and even handicap people, they get a great deal of elderly people, like I said, with family members bringing them in. Well, if that family member can't park, you know, anywhere near any of the small businesses, of course, not just Crazy Eights Hair Salon, I, to me, that's a real issue that needs to be taken into consideration. And like I said, if you don't see that side of it, that other people, I've seen comments, you know, oh, well, it's not going to make that much difference. But when we already have a shortage of parking, you know, for the small businesses on that street and, you know, granted, you've got tourists coming in, not every tourist, when it's super hot out, do they want to wait the other end of town for the shuttle to bring them in, you know, to the shops? So, that, okay, that's my input. I won't hold anybody up, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Lynn, Ms. Lynn Lang. Good evening, Ms. Lang. Welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Lynn Lang, thirty-two Little Road, Perryville. I am the owner of Crazy Eights Hair Salon. I have owned my salon for thirty-one years this year. And all I've ever heard is from customers coming in is, I can't find a place to park, can't find a place to park. I've had people go around the park and the streets three or four times trying to find a parking spot. I've had people leave and make another appointment another day or just not make an appointment at all and come back because they can't find a parking spot. And with the revitalization downtown, what I've heard is they're going to be taking sixty or seventy spots away and that is my livelihood. It's not just my livelihood, it's the girls that work for me, it's the, it's all businesses downtown and they just, it's, it's not feasible for our clients. It might be good for some people, but we have a lot of elderly and handicapped that come in. They also have people that, they do have people that drop them off, but they also, some of them still drive. And it's not, not the elderly that have trouble parking, it's anybody coming into town. That's all I've ever heard. And I have three hundred and twenty-three signatures here from customers, merchants, businesses that live downtown that I would like to give to somebody, whoever. And I'd like you to reconsider proposed parking plan. I would suggest, I mean, this is an idea that I've heard from somebody else, to maybe make one, Washington Street one-way from the other one-way street up in the, what, three hundred block or whatever, coming down, make it one-way and have parallel parking, I mean, to pull in parking on both sides. That would add parking spaces instead of taking them away. And that, that is my, and another question I have is during this process of the revitalization, how are we, how are customers going to get into other businesses? Are we going to be, have to close? Are we going to have to, we can't, somebody said use our back doors. Well, my back door is like a basement door with steps that go down to one of the basement, because the back of my building is like underground. So, I cannot have customers coming in the back door. Are they gonna, how are they going to do this downtown when they do the parking or the revitalization? Do you know?
Yeah. Well, no one individual business is going to be completely blocked from access. The firm we're working with does this for a living with revitalizing downtown urban areas. They're used to working with businesses. Briefly, there may be some people that might have to walk on some plywood or maybe under, around equipment, but we were not, we're not going to keep people from accessing their building. It'd just be a momentary disruption. We're not going to close down a block for months. We'll do it one quick section at a time. So, we, there's minimal disruption. We don't want anybody to not be able to go through their front door.
Okay. Well, I hope they reconsider the parking arrangement because what it sounds like is not going to work. And I don't want to have to close my doors or move somewhere else after thirty-one years. That's all I got to say right now. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sarah King.
Hello.
Good evening, Ms. King. Welcome back. May we please have your name and address for record?
It is Sarah King, five sixty-four Beale Road, Northeast Maryland.
Welcome.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to pretty much reiterate what Ms. Lynn just said. We are very much concerned about changing the parking. Washington Street is pretty much a nightmare. We do service a lot of seniors and handicapped persons. We have multiple days and times that, you know, we need those parking spots. And so, I've also went over a couple of things. Could I, because the last time I asked about, is there a possibility of you guys considering a parking study? Have you thought about that? Is there any going to be a vote or how does that go?
No, we have not. We have parking studies from the past that we've done decades ago, within the last ten years.
And how did that come out for?
Yeah, there's not enough parking.
Not the parking?
That's what they always keep saying. There's not enough parking downtown.
So, are we going to take away more? Is that, in the revitalization?
Well, you can not have enough parking and look not good, or you can have less parking and look great. I mean, one way or the other, we'll never, ever, ever solve the parking problem downtown. Right. That's right. That's what the study said. There's enough parking, just not parking at convenience. Thank you.
That means that there's nothing going to be done about that. There's not, there's no other reconsideration that you're saying it's already been done and?
Well, we know what it's going to say. It'll say the same thing it has twice in the last fifteen years that I've been on council and mayor, that we've had two parking studies done.
Well, I do have, I have two hundred and thirty-two signature on the position, my petition. So, I'll give those to you for, you know, modifying parking for the revitalization. I guess the other thing, you did say that we were not going to be closed at all at any time. No block, no street is going to shut down. Our businesses won't close. The doors won't close.
It's our understanding from the engineers that the way they're gonna do this in parcels is that it should be, should be no permanent closures. That's what we've been told.
Do you know when you plan to start this procedure?
It was supposed to be right after the summer season, early fall, but it's looking more and more like it was going to be pushed back to October, November. But we haven't made a decision yet. But the way I'm leaning, because we have good business in our city for the holidays. If we can't start by early September and get something significant done by November, I'd rather this happen starting January. So, I don't want to disrupt our holiday season downtown, if that makes sense. So, we'll, they'll try to really get some work done right after the first of the year. That's what we're thinking right now.
Because the small businesses really, pardon me, can't afford to close through the holidays. Some of our businesses.
Of course.
Christmas and stuff is really important. If they do close or if we have problems and our streets are shut down, is there, I was under the impression that there might be some type of funding from the city that would help if our businesses were struggling? Is there anything?
Uh, no, ma'am.
No, nothing, no type of help?
No, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. I'd like to call forward, Ms. Lisa Altland. Did I say that correctly? Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Yes. My name is Lisa Altland. I live at six fourteen Chapel Heights Drive in Havity Grace.
Hello.
Hi. First, I want to ask you a question. Is the reason, because what I have to say may not make much of a difference. I was told that the revitalization project was not a done deal. Is it?
What do you mean? Like the entire project?
Yeah.
Nothing's a done deal. Council can yank it anytime they want.
Okay. Because I was told by, when, before I went to cast my vote, I spoke to two of the incumbents and I was told that the revitalization project, by one of them, the revitalization project had not been voted on by council. Is this correct?
Council has given their approval by virtue of voting for the budget the last two years.
And the, but the revitalization is a grant. It's not part of the budget.
We're using the ARPA money for it.
I read that it was the CERI program, the State Economic Revitalization Initiative Program?
No, ma'am.
Gave ten million dollars to the City of Havity Grace?
No, ma'am.
It's online.
Well, it's not on our line.
Really? And two hundred and eleven thousand was given to the Havity Grace Alliance? That's what was online.
Steve.
Ms. Johnson can speak to that and economic development, but the funding that is used for this downtown project is part of the American Rescue Plan funding. I'm not familiar with what Ms. Altland's talking about on the other.
And I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the grant you're speaking of either. Did you see it on our website? Did it have the years?
No, I didn't get it on the Havity Grace website. I got it on a news website.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, otherwise.
If you could share that with us.
I certainly will.
Yeah. Because we can look into, if we got ten million dollars out there that we don't know about, we'll be happy to take it.
Well, you know, I mean, it was, that, this is what I read and when I told it was her thirteen million, I figured that was part of the money that was being given. That was the Maryland State Economic Revitalization Initiative Program. So, so you said it was part of the, part of the budget, but it's not a separate entity? The revitalization project is, you say it's part of the budget. It was part of the budget that was voted on?
Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah. So, there was six million, a little over six million set aside for the downtown revitalization plan last year, this, this current fiscal year. That was approved by council, but with the understanding that it was still a year away from the engineering being done. Tonight, we're going to introduce this coming year's budget, so FY twenty-four, which begins in July. There's a little over five million for the downtown revitalization there. But what you're referring to as far as the approvals goes back to several meetings ago when Patrick first came and gave an update on the final plan that Tool Design had presented. And this was prior to Tool coming in and basically giving the same update. And in that meeting, I asked that exact question is, are we just, is council just approving this by virtue of the budget? And Mr. Mayor, you said that council would have the ability to approve the final plan once it's presented. So, that's what you're referring to.
So, has the final plan been presented to, to the council?
We have not approved or received a final plan. My understanding was we were waiting for the engineering, but I feel like the goalposts for that keep getting moved.
Okay. Because I had spoken to you. And, and actually, the, I spoke to the other council member who's no longer on council and he knew nothing about the project at all with the questions that I asked. I mean, the number of parking places that I said that were being taken away, because I read the whole board downtown, he was totally off on that. So, I was probably one of the two votes that he didn't get. Anyway, so what I came to say was, I'm a third-generation Havity Grace resident. I'm a homeowner and a registered voter. I bring my eighty-four-year-old mother downtown for various appointments. She's been using downtown merchants since I was a child. And every Friday or Saturday, whenever she had her hair appointment, we made a day of being in downtown Havity Grace. Now, when I bring her downtown for her appointments because she's not driving, I have to stop in the middle of the road because there's no parking to let her out. And sometimes when she first got out of the hospital, I had to get out, put my flat shirts on and let her, and walk her to the door while I'm getting beeped at, screamed at by people coming through the downtown. There's not enough parking. And to take away sixty-some parking spaces is absolutely ridiculous. I was told there's going to be parking, a new parking lot behind on St. John Street between the Pabst Blue Ribbon and the Seneca Cannery. It's going to be seventy-six or seventy-some new parking spaces. And that's wonderful for people who work downtown and for people who are going to shop downtown for the day, but not for somebody who's coming to get a cup of coffee at Java or somebody who's coming to get a pizza from La Cucina or somebody who's going to get a haircut. It's not, they're not going to walk two blocks to do that. They're going to park at another place where they can walk inside and get their pizza. Nani's, Pat's, Frank's, or a hair place, the salon, Tony's. You can park right in front of their place. So, why would you walk to get your haircut? Is, is part of my point. I saw people doing the same thing as me with people who were more handicapped than my mother was. And I just feel that, I was also told that only half of the downtown is being revitalized from Rasambu Plaza to Congress Avenue. Where are the, where are the business people who are on St. John? That's going to look absolutely ridiculous that half of our downtown looks beautiful and the other half looks like crap. It's going to have holy potholes and unfixed sidewalks, just like it does now.
Where are you getting your information from?
From your boards downtown.
All that's, the phase one, phase one.
Okay. Well, I was told that there was not enough money by someone here.
There's not money for phase one and then we'll work our way down to St. John Street from Green Street.
But what, what is the big deal about, why can't you just fix the infrastructure, fix the streets and fix the sidewalks and leave the parking alone? Why do we have to look like a European city? We are Havity Grace, Maryland. I'm third generation. Most of these people haven't lived here as long as I have. I don't want to see it changed like that. I want it to stay Havity Grace. That's my point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Former city council member Joseph Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. First of all, I wanted to say congratulations to my dear friend, Mr. Boker. And if Vicky Jones were here, I'd also congratulate both of you on your election and Mr. Robertson on your reelection to council. So, it's, it's great to, to see you all up on the dais. Again, congratulations. I'm, I'm kind of, I want to say in the middle a little bit on this issue. As you all know, my husband and I own a business on Washington Street in downtown Havity Grace. So, we will be impacted one way or the other by the so we will be impacted one way or the other by the changes. Uh, I think I've spoken here before that we're, we're definitely not opposed to the changes. We think that the improvements are, are going to be positive overall. However, I, I think there are some concerns that have been identified. You also might know that I'm, I'm one of the, I'm a coordinator of our downtown merchant group. It's a loosely affiliated group of merchants. There is no leadership, there's no elected body, there's no bylaws, it's just a group of people that get together that happen to own businesses or properties in town. And we talk about our businesses, and we come up with promotions and ideas. And then we also talk about things that might impact our business, and like the revitalization program. So, we've had some conversations in the past, and I, I wanted to, since I knew this was coming up tonight, I thought I would come in and, and speak to a couple of the issues. On the, on the parking issue, I certainly understand the concerns that were raised. I have photos, I probably, as much as anyone, maybe more than a lot of people, spend time in downtown. So I see a lot that goes on, because I have a business, because I'm watering plants, or I'm just walking and visiting other businesses, or doing business ourselves, I see a lot that goes on. I have photos of, of elderly people and walkers getting out of their cars and going into the Crazy Eights Salon. So I know they, that is a challenge, because there's not a handicap spot there, and so they have to be let out in the middle of the street and make their way over to the business, whether it's Crazy Eights, or a restaurant, or anything else. So, that is a concern, and I, I think, I just caution you or ask that you not, and I don't think you did, but I just don't, don't dismiss the concerns of the elderly and, and the people with disabilities in terms of accessibility. And I think Tool Design, they know what they're doing, and they should be able to address some of those issues and to find some good solutions to dealing with handicapped parking, or, or parking for people with disabilities. To the parking study issue, I understand that there have been multiple parking studies done in the past. Based on my research, parking studies are only good for, for the time, they're snapshot. They're, they're as good as the time, or as the situation, at, at the time that they're done. And there are many reasons to conduct new, new parking studies. Things like changing demographics, when you've got new people coming in, or, or just new, new traffic patterns. Economic development, you've, but you build a new building, or you do some new development, that's going to change the pattern of the demand and supply of parking. Of course, events and seasonal variations are going to change demands for parking. Land use, or reconstruction, or construction, are all valid reasons to conduct a new parking study, especially when you're removing potentially, and then I hear different variations on the number, 50 to 70 parking spaces. When you remove that much, I think it's a valid reason to conduct a new study to figure out exactly, what are you going to have when you finish the construction? Where are these people going to go? I understand that people are saying, well, you can park two or three blocks away, well, that now puts people in front of people's houses that are used to having, they may not have driveways or garages, so they're used to having that parking in front of their residents. Now they're going to have to contend with visitors and consumers and customers. So, I only ask that you, that you don't dismiss the idea of a, of a parking study, just because it's been done before. And then the, the final part of that is, what's the goal of having a parking study? I understand, I understand that, you know, there's not enough parking. Fine, that'll come up, the conclusion will be that there's not enough parking, well, what do you do with the parking that you do have? So, my suggestion is that you look at a parking management, so the parking study is the first step. The second step is to come up with a parking management plan that addresses different needs and concerns. You've got consumers, customers, residents, um, that are all vying for the same limited amount of parking. So if we enforced our parking that we have now, if we put permits in, if we put meters, if we monitored and managed the, the supply and demand, then it wouldn't be as much of a problem. So, I just ask that you reconsider that and not dismiss doing a study for that. Finally, in terms of the construction, I polled, I came up with about 10 things that a municipality, a government can do during times like these with the construction. And I can share those 10, and you might have seen, I posted them on my Facebook page, most of, all of you are connected to me on Facebook, you might have seen it. But I polled the merchant group, which is a private group of merchants on Facebook, and, and the top three so far in that poll of these items that we're asking the city consider are, let me, let me get my list here. Here it is. The top three that we would ask you to consider during the construction phase. Number one was temporary signage and weigh finding, I think that was probably already part of the plan. But that would just provide clear and highly visible signage to direct customers to the affected businesses. Temporary signs can indicate alternate routes, parking options, and pedestrian access points. I, I, I fully assume that that's going to be part of the plan, but we just want to reiterate it, that we, we hope that that is part of the plan. The second item that the merchants have all agreed is timely completion and mitigation measures. And what that means is the city must recognize the importance in completing the construction project promptly to minimize the impact on businesses, and that, you know, implement dust control measures, noise mitigation, and other efforts to reduce disruption as much as possible. Again, I would believe that, I would, I would like to believe that that would be part of the plan, but we, we as merchants are just stating it now that we, we hope and, and ask that it is. And then finally, the, the top, of the top three, the third one, if at all possible, any kind of financial assistance, be it grants, or some sort of a subsidy, if it appears that, that the delay, that there are delays, or that access to our buildings and to our businesses causes a drop in business. I mean, we saw that during COVID, and I can speak to what you were speaking about earlier about the grant. The CERI grant was a grant of about $200,000 that came through the Haverty Grace Alliance and was distributed to local businesses. That was a state-run Main Street COVID grant, not related to the ARPA funds that they're talking about. But I happen to know, based on my research, is the ARPA funds also do allow for you to spend some portion of that money on grants or subsidies to businesses. And just ask that you consider, as we go along, if, especially if there are delays, that you look at possibly setting up a grant program similar to what we had during COVID, which was a disruption to business. Same as what removing access to our businesses would be, disruption to business. That you consider possibly fining some funds, if it looks like it's going to be a long, a long-term thing, to consider that. So, those are the top three, there are other things that I, that I think that are reasonable asks on, from the merchants to the city, to consider. And then finally, we as, my, my dear friend, Mr. Boker, has known that, and others, that we've, we've asked through the chamber and, and other mechanisms, we've asked for ongoing dialogue with the administration. Not a seat on EDAB, but actual dialogue to prioritize and discuss the, the issues that are at hand. And we repeat that request, I'm here to repeat that request, that when we start getting closer to construction, that we have a point of contact, that someone that can actively talk to us. Our research, we've, we've done research to other community, other communities that have gone through this, including places like Salisbury, Maryland. Businesses shut down. Businesses move, businesses go out of, businesses go out of business because of these types of projects. Again, we look forward to the final result. It's how we get there that are, that's our concern, so, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Councilmember Robertson?
Oh. Yeah, which is mine. So I guess it was a little better than a year ago, that the, there was an update provided to the downtown merchants group by our economic development director, and Randy Taylor speaking specifically about the parking issue. And at that time, they had asked the group to come up with some, you know, some thoughts and ideas as Tool was in, you know, the very beginning of the design phase. I, I'm just curious, have you guys had any thoughts or ideas other than a parking study?
Yeah, well, we, we had a whole list of concerns, and I just, I just listed some of the ideas. But we, I think most all of us participated in the charrettes, and have gone to the public meetings, and we contributed our comments online, and, and directly in the, in the charrette meetings, so that's all there. And we've also, like I said, we have lists of concerns and questions that we've put forward. So I, I believe we have. I don't, in terms of anything specific given to Tool directly. I think it was all done in, in the public meetings.
I think, I mean, it was asked that you, you have a working group and then, you know, provide specific.
And we, then we did ask for that dialogue with the city, and to sit down and discuss our, our concerns, and that's.
Through the chamber, or through the downtown merchants group?
We, I think the, the suggestion was that we work through the chamber to the city, that we were trying. I don't want to go down that path, but with the alteration to the alliance chamber situation, you know, and, and having an independent volunteer run, like I said, there's, there's no organization to the, to the merchant group. It's a group, a loosely group of, of people that I volunteered to coordinate, mostly just to organize meetings. So I'm not the leader of it, I'm not the spokesman, spokesperson for it, I'm just a coordinator. And I'm speaking here and repeating what I have heard, and what I polled and collected the information, and some of my own opinion. But there is no formal structure there to do that. But the hope was that we would be able to have sit-down meetings to have those conversations.
Got it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Sure, come on up. We're all friends here.
So, in February of 2022, when the charrettes were held, they were called public charrettes? But they were held by Zoom meeting. How were those advertised to the public? Like, usually they're like public meetings or public hearings or something, and because they were held in, in Zoom form. Cause when you, if you would stand downtown and you would pull people walking into the businesses, they would tell you that you can fix the streets and sidewalks and everything, but please don't take away the parking. Is there any way that a public hearing could be held to address the issue and hear what the public has to say?
Well, you're doing it right now.
Well, I know, but I'm not the public. I mean, I'm talking about other people, because I've, I've seen over the years where there are advertisements in the paper, which I know are obscure now. But, you know, and that's why a lot of seniors are out of contact these days. For one, there's a paper problem, they're not getting their newspapers anymore, but there's no record, and, you know, the Aegis is not getting delivered, and there's not much information in the Aegis anymore about Haverty Grace. So they're kind of disconnected unless they're on the computer, and they're not. So that's why I asked if there were going to be any kind of public hearings about the parking issue.
Well, we'll probably, um, once we get more of our engineering plans done, we're about 30% right now. When we get a little bit more done, we'll give updates. Mr. Seipolt, who's our project manager, has from time to time, at council meetings, given updates with his boards and shows to public. We don't have a date yet when the next set of concept plans or, or set of plans are coming, but just, just keep, every two weeks, let's look, uh, let's look online and see if it's on the council meeting, it'll, it'll be posted. Sure. Anyone else here to talk about parking downtown? Yes, sir?
Ross Stouffer, representing 415 Pennington.
Hello.
River Dental specifically, um, one of the owners of the dental office. And currently, our, you know, parking situation is, say, less than stellar, and the removal of more parking spaces right around the corner from, uh, I'm looking them up, looking it up. Yep, right up, no, no, I know, right up the street from. Right around the corner from Crazy Eights. But, um, uh, it's an issue, it is an issue, and the loss of spaces is, is a concern. But I'm going to also bring up, I don't think anybody's said this, it's the kind of spaces too. The state of Maryland does not require parking, parallel parking for kids under the age, you know? My, my oldest son is 21, and he didn't have to parallel park to pass his test. So parallel parking isn't, isn't, isn't a thing anymore, I guess you'd say. So as you have the pool-in spaces removed and parking parallel, becomes a little more of an issue also. But it's a concern for, I'm, I don't want to drag this on, but it's a concern for our building also, especially downtown.
Do you, oh, if I may. Do you let your, your patients or clients know about the, the city parking that's like 100 feet away? The, there's a big parking lot right there on Lodge.
Around the corner.
Yeah, right behind you.
Yeah, we, we do, that fills up too.
I know, right?
It all fills up.
I like to think that's one of the secret places downtown, if you can't find someplace else.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we know about that. Uh, but, but on our street, you know, uh, you know, right across from the visitor's center, all that's 30 minutes, no one ever parks there. But all of it's 30 minutes, and no one can park there, because it's only 30 minutes, because, but, you know, except the two people out in the visitor's center. And then, then you have all the spots on top of the street for the firehouse too. So they have all, above that's all firehouse parking, and then two spots on the other side of the street for firehouse parking, that gets used, I, I, I understand that. But the visitor's spots across the street, that barely, very rarely gets used. And, and like I said, they're, they're, you know, you go back to the elderly and all the other people coming in, walkers and stuff like that, because we get a lot of that too. We got one, um, handicap spot there. So, and that's, that's actually across the street, or not across, but up, up the street from us, it's not right in front of our building. So, it, it is an issue, and I, I don't want to drag it on any longer than I need to. But just, you know, throwing our name in that, hey, we recognize this is going to be a problem for us also, and just want it to be addressed, you know, so, so take, take a second look.
Do you know if there used to be more handicap parking, that, that building used to be the, the health department?
Yep, yep.
Was there more handicap parking before when we removed it?
I don't know, that was a while ago, yeah. I've been in Haverty Grace for 17 years, so we've been, we've been, we've been here for a while, from down on Green Street up, up to Pennington. We opened up the building up there in, uh, eight years ago, '14.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else here to speak on parking? Yes? Good evening and welcome, may we please have your name and address for the record?
Deborah Goldman, 300 Bourbon Street or Bourbon Street. The revitalization, I understand, is to, and I have questions more than comments, is to promote tourism. And my question is about taxpayers, because a lot of the apartments on Washington Street are rental units. And if they can't have access to easy parking, then what happens to the person who owns that property and is paying taxes? I think that's a real plausible question, because the taxpayers support our government in lots of ways. And I guess the other question I have is, the revitalization is to help promote tourism, I understand. Again, how does it help taxpayers? There are businesses that are used, but a lot of it is businesses for visitors coming to town. So I think it's a consideration, and my question is, how is this helping the taxpayers of Haverty Grace?
May I just, um, you know, I mean, we, we've heard a lot about the parking, and that makes sense, because this is America, and this is a rural county, and we're all used to driving everywhere that we go. As someone that's lived in cities and has traveled the world with the Army, I'll tell you, one of the things that attracted me to Haverty Grace, and specifically living downtown, was the walkability. And my wife, my son and I, we walk, I mean, we walk everywhere, we're blessed to be able to do that, I understand not everyone can. But I think not enough has been said about the pedestrian. But I think not enough has been said about the pedestrian issue. So we hear about the parking issue, but not enough is said about the pedestrian issue and you're smiling. But you know, walking down the street, uh, especially on Washington is kind of troublesome sometimes, uh, especially on a busy day because the sidewalk is so narrow. You've got to walk single file sometimes into the street. I'm pushing my 10-year-old son into the street, uh, so that folks can come by, especially in wheelchairs and strollers and all those things. So part of the effort, the reason why, uh, we're even discussing removing parking spaces to begin with, uh, comes from the, the idea that folks like to be in a walkable, vibrant and, and safe to navigate community. So that's the part of it, I think, that we're probably missing in this whole conversation, uh, you know, is, is the ease ability of walking, the ease ability of wheelchairs and strollers to navigate the curves. That's, that's just my two cents. And as far as for the taxpayers, I mean, I see that as a benefit for the taxpayers, you know, especially with children, elderly folks. And I will say, uh, just on a personal note that, um, you know, the Crazy Eights salon situation, uh, verbatim happened to us a few years ago. Uh, my grandmother got her last haircut there before she passed away and you know, we pulled up and had to help her out and help her in. So I'm acutely aware of the senior population and, uh, taking them around. I took care of both of my grandparents before they passed. Um, so I get it from that perspective too, but I just want everybody to be cognizant and aware that this isn't just taking away parking spaces to make a place look beautiful. It's also making a place a lot more functional for pedestrians.
Thank you for that viewpoint. Anybody else have anything else to suggest to me that I can look at this in a different way? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. So a couple of years ago, we got an email that we were going to get $13.8 million from the federal government that we didn't even ask for. Now imagine that when your total annual operating budget is around 15 and 16 million a year. The uses for that money kind of changed a little bit. One thing we knew we couldn't use it for, uh, we couldn't artificially lower the tax rate or we couldn't put it in like employees pensions, but, but we did have a wide variety of things we could use it for. So mostly, uh, in a city that's historic, we have old infrastructure. And if anybody has been tuning into this channel for the last, you know, eight years, you, you probably hear the same thing about water and sewer infrastructure, things like that. And we've asked the citizens many times to go to the polls for us for referendum to help us address that aging water and sewer infrastructure need. And you have, uh, two and a half million dollars, uh, back in 2016, a $15 million bond bill in February 2020 on a special election. So we knew the right thing to do with that money was to just put it in a lot of water and sewer infrastructure. Some of the oldest infrastructure in the city does lie in the Washington Street area, St. John's area. And that's, you might hear me quip sometimes, you know, we have pipes from the Roosevelt administration and I'm not talking about Franklin. I mean, that stuff is over 120 years old. Well, we also knew if anybody ever had a windfall of, you know, a bonus check from work or found a $20 bill in an old pocket and you thought, you know, it's been in your closet for five years, we wanted to do something extra special. We wanted to replace all the infrastructure that was aging on Washington Street and St. John's Street. We've had a lot of issues, uh, with some of the buildings. First of all, we have water lines that deliver water. We have sewer lines that remove sewer, but also have laterals. Laterals are the lines that come from the old buildings to the center of the street under the ground where the water, where the sewer comes from. And we've had to dig a lot of, uh, old sidewalk up a lot and some streets. I mean, you notice Washington Street, um, isn't that pretty in some areas, a lot of potholes. So we wanted to replace it all at once with that ARPA money. But we also wanted to put it back together beautiful, not just black asphalt and concrete skinny sidewalks, but we wanted to do something extra special and reserve some of that money to make every citizen in Havity Grace proud of our history, to exemplify what a colonial Chesapeake Bay community would look like with a little bit of a flair of the modern world. And so we contact, we contracted a company through a bid process called Tool Design and, and they were excellent. And so we say, look, here's what our vision is, but we're not going to tell the citizens what we're going to do. We, we want the citizens to participate and tell us what they want to see from their city. And many, many people, I don't know the number, but it was a lot of sessions over several months, many people participated in what they called charrettes, some in person, some online, on Zoom. And everything was jotted down. And then when Tool Design got all the information, they crunched it smaller. Then they came back from more charrettes and then they crunched it smaller until they finally came up with a concept plan. Now, I can tell you, everybody in this room right now really thought they were going to say to make Washington Street from, from the Lafayette statue where Legion is, all the way down St. John's, past Coakley's, past McGregor's, go past Conquer Point Coffee, go past the wine, uh, Wine Bar, go all the way up to La Cachina. I thought they were going to tell us to make that one way. But they came back and said, that's, that would be the death of everything. Of all the cities we've worked in, in this country and in, and overseas, one-way traffic kills. You want it two-way. And we were, and we were like, okay, well, we didn't pay these people to argue with them. I mean, we're, we really thought one-way was the way to do it because as a person said earlier, you know, one-way traffic, you can still do angle parking. But two-way traffic, we still need to get the sidewalks to come out, as Councilmember Robertson said is true. If you're walking, if you're holding your hand over your wife or sweetheart, you kind of have to let go every once in a while because there's a tree blocking you. You can't really walk side by side on these sidewalks. Um, it's pretty narrow, it's pretty tight. And so we're not, there's not going to be no parking, but there's going to be parallel parking. And when these streets come back together, the sidewalks will be wider, there'll be curbless, there'll be curbless sidewalks. There's a lot of different things they're going to incorporate in this. Now, I get it. I totally understand if I owned a service business like the hair salon, you know, it, it's your customer-based, service-based, you want to pull right up to it. If you have a restaurant like the Wine Bar, you know, you've got reservations for six o'clock, you don't mind if you have to walk a block, you'll get there. But I've been on council, I've been, have had the privilege of serving you for 15 years, seven as council, eight as mayor. And when it started off is, what's the city doing to bring people to town? What's the city doing to advertise, you know, to bring people to town? And the question was asked, how does this benefit the taxpayer? Well, we see it here all the time in City Hall, the strength of our economy in this city, how strong the house sales are. No house sells for what it's listed for. That's just a starting bid. All the houses lately have been going way over asking price. Because one thing any two-year-old, I mean, any second grader can tell you is Boardwalk is the most expensive property on Monopoly Board because that's where people want to be. And it was a very simple formula to figure out that we need to make Havity Grace a place where people want to be because if your houses are strong, you attract investor, well, people that want to come in and invest their lives here. They want to remodel these beautiful homes. They want to make it a safe town. Strong home values bring positive attributes to a city. Propensity for better schools, propensity for less crime. There's a lot of values, there's a lot of value to have in good, strong home values across the range of incomes. So we advertise and we, we have events and, you know, we do commercials and we have billboards and we do songs and all the other things we did to bring people to town. And now there really is a parking problem. You're not going to like what I'm going to tell you, but the, the days of pulling up right to where you want to go, they're numbered. It's, it's inevitable and the city's not the enemy. I want you to know that. Because we could pull this entire project and can it right now and all it would take is either Joe Retro or, you know, Joseph's to decide to leave and a big restaurant comes in and there's no parking anymore whatsoever. So we could abandon a project, but it's not going to solve the problem. What I want everyone to know is the charrettes, the idea of the charrettes came from an organic desire from the citizens in this town to have something special. The end product, then the concept is, is a collective will of the citizens. To the businesses out there, we will do everything we can to work with you within reason of the vision. We will make sure there's handicap parking where there needs to be. Councilmember Robertson and I were talking earlier about things like that and about like limited time parking and thing, I mean, things we can do to try to mitigate those things, but the change is here. And I know that people don't want to hear that, but our success, the success we've always wanted is here now. And we have to figure out how to bring that success here in a way who, that it doesn't change who we are as a city, but also gives us a lot of pride. We're talking about a, a once in a lifetime opportunity that we, we can never afford this project on our own budget. We can probably do sections at a time, but not to the scale in which we want to get done. This is a, this is a 50 to 100-year vision that could be done and it's going to look amazing. So once we get the final concept nailed down, the council will have a chance to look at it. And I said earlier something about construction that these are, construction time will be probably pushed back to, you know, if everything goes on schedule and we finally get the plans and council looks at, it'd be probably right after the new year, maybe, hopefully. We do have to expend or at least identify these ARPA funds by December 2024. I want everybody to know that it's going to be beautiful, it's going to be amazing, it's going to make everybody proud. And I can tell the businesses right now that are really nervous, don't be scared of a six and a half million dollar investment right in front of your shop. It's going to help you, it's not going to hurt you. The city is working hard on identifying parking. Matter of fact, the whole city is a parking lot. We don't charge anybody to park here. Ever been to New England? They don't want you there. I mean, I love going to Rockport, you know, getting my fried clams. Good luck parking on a beach. I mean, Annapolis, we don't charge, you, you can come right down to Tidings Park Marina and you can park right up to that little fence barrier and you can sit there and you can eat your sandwich and we don't charge you a dime. In fact, if you're a veteran, you get a special spot that's for free also. We don't charge parking in this city. Just make sure you don't park on a yellow curb or a red curb or a fire hydrant and you can park anywhere you want. We had 200 and some parking spaces, almost 300 spaces added at the Star Center. The city's negotiating for a piece of property on the corner of, um, Hutchins Park and St. John's Street that could add 70 and some spots. We operate every weekend, a free trolley that picks people up from collector lots to take them downtown. In fact, our number's here on this weekend, I was going to say this in my closing speech, but four trolleys ran for three days and they moved 1,100 passengers, a total of 388 miles for free and it didn't use any gasoline, they're all electric. We're working on everything we can. So, so we hear what you're saying, we're sympathetic, but change is coming. And we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we all can benefit from equally. So everyone who spoke tonight, thank you for coming here. We, we all need to hear what you have to say. We all need to hear it. Everyone's, everyone's thoughts are valued, I can promise you that. Give us time, we'll keep you posted. Nothing's done behind a closed door. Whenever we get new sets of plans, we always air them out here at the council meeting. So with that said, I will open up the floor to any new speakers on any new topics. We did the Erie Street, we did the, uh, downtown parking. Is anyone here who wishes to speak on a different topic? Yes, sir? Hello, sir?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Captain Rick Wall, 329 bounding home here in the beautiful city of Havity Grace. So I'm here to talk about boat parking.
Sir, how many spaces would you like?
Just pay your $10 and we're happy.
Tonight on the agenda, we're having our family picnic on the 23rd when, uh, the sailing vessel Dove comes in, uh, down in Hutchins Park. And so we have our park application in tonight for, uh, the, the city council and, and to approve that application. So I'm just asking favorable results. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. Any else wish to speak? Comments from the council? Okay, we will go on to item number seven is appointments and, uh, we have one, two, three, four, five appointments. Yeah, they're all appointments, no, no reappointments. Okay. So, uh, we'll start off with the Economic Development Advisory Board appointment, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, it is my esteemed pleasure and honor to submit to you for approval, Mr. Charlie Heiner for the appointment to Economic Development Advisory
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Boyer. This is for the appointment of Mr. Charles Heiner to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Questions or comments on the young man? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Mr. Charles Heiner is appointed to the Economic Development Advisory Board by a vote of 5-0 and affirmative. Item B, Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I would like to nominate Mr. Ronald Browning to the Historic Preservation
Council, I have a motion by Council President to have a second. Seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor? I would just like to, uh, welcome back to the commission.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The council, by a vote of 5-0, welcomes back Mr. Browning to Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you. Come on, he's a legend, I know. I mean, he's a legend. I mean, he, he is Historic Preservation Commission. All right. Thanks, Mr. Brown. Okay, uh, item C, Marina Commission. Councilmember Shenegas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I would like to nominate Stephen Lay for reappointment to the Marina Commission.
Council, I have a motion by Councilwoman Shenegas to have a second.
Second.
Sorry, sir. I'm sorry, who was that?
Johnny.
Johnny, okay. Seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is for the reappointment of Mr. Lay. Questions or comments? Yes.
I would like to say that Stephen Lay represents the commercial fishing. He is a true waterman and serves on several state regulatory committees. It would be an honor to have him reappointed to the Marina Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Reappointment of Mr. Lay carries 5-0 and affirmative. And finally, uh, we have another appointment to, we have an appointment to the Planning Commission, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you again, Mayor. Council, I would like to, at this time, appoint Janice Chan to the Planning Commission.
Council, I have a motion by Councilwoman Shenegas, seconded by Councilmember Robertson as the appointment of Janice Chan to the Planning Commission. Questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas.
It would be an honor to have Janice Chan serve. She's an experienced educator. She's served in the United States Navy and worked in, has worked in the business industry. She has lived many places across the nation and she would be a welcomed addition to our Planning Commission.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The appointment of Mrs. Chan to the Planning Commission carries 5-0 and affirmative. You know, everybody needs a clap tonight, I'm telling you. Good job. Um, what I'm going to do now is, um, swear at these people real quick. I'd like to call up, uh, Mr. Charles Heiner.
Did you say swear at these people?
Mr. Heiner, you've been voted and, uh, voted on to the Economic Development Advisory Board by the council and I appreciate you for your time. I'm going to ask you to take the oath of office. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me when I say the word aye. Please repeat the word aye, but also say your name, sir. Aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution, Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear or favor or prejudice.
As charged to duties.
As charged to duty.
As a member of.
As a member of.
The Economic Development Advisory Board. The Economic Development Advisory Board. City Haverty Grace. Best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Preservation Commission.
Great support group here, okay.
Commission's coming up.
Look at this. Look at this support group. What a good group of people, all right, awesome, okay. So, Mr. Browning, thank you very much, you've been voted on unanimously by council to rejoin Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
So, please raise your right hand, sir, repeat after me, when I say the word aye, please say the word aye, but also your name. Aye?
Aye, Ron Browning.
Do solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill the requirement?
I will fulfill, fulfill the requirement?
Of the office I'm about to assume.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful?
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the law?
And support the law.
Constitution thereof.
Constitution thereof.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice?
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
As charged to duties?
As charged to duties.
As a member of?
As a member of.
The Historic Preservation Commission.
Historic Preservation Commission.
Of the city Haverty Grace.
Of the city of Haverty Grace.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
It's kind of a little chilly just now.
When I'm cold, it's cold. How many people I'm randomly in the background of their pictures?
Oh, yeah, all the time.
That's why I wear the pink, stand out.
All right, next up, I'd like to call Ms. Janice Chan for the Planning Commission, and her hearing section.
All right, so, just like the previous two commission members, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand, repeat after me, when I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye, but also say your name. Aye?
Aye, Janice Chan.
Do solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill the requirement?
Fulfill the requirement.
Of the office I'm about to assume?
Of the office I'm about to resume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will be faithful?
faithful.
Bear true allegiance?
Allegiance.
State of Maryland?
Maryland.
Support the Constitution?
Support the Constitution.
And laws thereof. That I will faithfully and impartially?
Faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice?
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
As charged to duties?
As charged to duties.
A member of the Planning Commission?
As a member of the Planning Commission.
City Haverty Grace.
City of Haverty Grace.
Best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Ms.
Thank you.
Just the police officers. To the officers in the back, I do have to apologize, it's late on a school night, we're going to get the kids up here first for the rec commission presentation, if I can call you guys up? The rec committee, that is.
Oh, they're coming in around here? Oh, they're cute.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, you want me to? Okay, well, you don't cook. Only when you're ready. You ready?
We're ready.
All right, good evening, we welcome the opportunity to share information with you, the city council, and our community, to bring awareness about the Haverty Grace Recreation Committee and our programs. This evening, we will communicate key information about the value of U-Sports, our current leadership team, an overview of the Recreation Committee, along with information about our budget and community involvement activities, that we hope will bring clarity to recent conversations. To set the stage, we know U-Sports have a significant impact on young people in our communities, from the positive health benefits, development of cognitive skills, building confidence and self-esteem, and providing leadership skills, to name a few. We see firsthand the active youth that active youth make for active communities that are healthier, thriving communities. Before we dive into details, I would like to introduce to you our current volunteer leadership team, who have a combined 155-plus years of experience on the rec committee, and who are helping to ensure our community has a variety of activities for both adults and youth. John Norvell, President, Steve Snyder, Vice President, Jim Nemeth, Treasurer, Lisa Belcher, Secretary, and at-large members, Moni Rimmel-Holloway, Adam Donaldson, and myself, Michelle Hoffman-Samuels. So, who is, what is, the Haverty Grace Recreation Committee? The Recreation Committee was established in 1966 by Gunther Hirsch, and is a separate 501(c)(3), who works in cooperation with the Harford County Department of Parks and Recreation. We accept participants who live in Haverty Grace, throughout the county, and even across the river. Families choose our recreation program because it's convenient, their town may not offer a program that we offer, their children would like to participate with their classmates or future classmates, we have better coaching, we have better organized programs, and most importantly, we offer a family environment in a great community. It is important to us that we ensure all youth can participate regardless of income. To assist, our programs offer scholarships to at-risk youth and families in need. Our partnership with Harford County and the city of Haverty Grace has provided numerous of opportunities that benefit our entire community. In addition to field space, some past projects funded by program open space monies have included the original promenade, which was 1.2 million, and the lights on the tennis and basketball courts. Most recently, we submitted a letter of support for a grant opportunity with the city's sustainability and economic development consultant to develop North Park. Our Recreation Committee offers a variety of programs for both youth and adults. We have over 15 programs competing successfully, many of our programs have been around for 50-plus years, with our newest programs being summer camps and summer field hockey. We offer a variety of programs throughout the year, and many of our programs operate in multiple seasons, providing even greater benefits for our young people. Last year, our programs served over 3,000 participants, 93% of those being elementary and middle school children. In our 2022-23 sports seasons, you can see that 63% of our youth participants are from Haverty Grace, living in the postal code of 21078. Our reputation for outstanding coaching, organized programs, and family-friendly environment is because of the over 540 volunteers who give over 17,000 hours of their time annually to support the growth and development of our youth. They give so much of their time, share many of their talents, so we're not surprised, we have a thriving and growing recreation program right here in Haverty Grace. As we continue to grow, like the town of Haverty Grace, our space has not. In fact, we've lost space. As a board, we are paying careful attention to and planning for the need for additional outdoor and indoor space, both short-term and long-term, ensuring our programs, and most importantly, our participants, are impacted as little as possible. We thank the city council for their support the past two years for the use of the Star Center gyms. In the 2021-22, the COVID year, we call it, we were able to use both gyms, January through March, for a fee of just under $10,000, getting our young people active again and back together. Last year, we used both gyms, late November through March, for a fee of $40,000, providing much-needed space for our indoor programs to operate successfully. And we thank you again for the discounted rate recently approved for the Star Center in the coming year, which will provide a much-needed gym as we continue to adjust to the increases in participation and the lack of available space. As you can see on the slide, last year our youth programs utilized 10 outdoor fields and 16 indoor facility spaces. 20 were county, 3 were private facilities, and 3 were city-operated. Next, we would like to share some details within our budget and specifically address the $300,000 that had been shared on multiple occasions. On the revenue side, you can see the funds received by the city of Haverty Grace. Those funds have been dispersed annually to our programs. Programs have used those funds immediately to support their operating costs. Our programs also collect registration fees, fees which are competitive with other programs in our leagues and around the county. Programs also raise additional funding through their fundraisers and sponsorships to support operating costs and future program needs. On the expense side, you can see some Recreation Committee expenses that are used to cover insurance costs and software fees, and our program expenses are used to cover uniforms, facility fees, league dues, and equipment, to name a few. To explain the $300,000, the Haverty Grace Recreation Committee has a general fund account. At the end of the past month, we have $148,000 in that account. These funds have accumulated over 55-plus years. They are used to support high priority and emergency program needs, like paying for the Star Center during the COVID year, or replacing football helmets to address new safety requirements. Funds are also used to expand our ability to provide short and long-term capital improvements, like renting portable field lights or adding a new storage container. For our Recreation Committee programs, each program has their own account. Money in their accounts is used to support operating expenses during their seasons, and funds remaining after their seasons are carried over in their accounts and provide upcoming program requirements, as well as stability to address specific program needs, like new chest protectors or purchasing a new wrestling mat. Our program accounts, at the end of this past month, had a combined total of 220,000, keeping in mind our summer and fall programs are currently collecting registration fees. To accurately summarize, when you add up our expenses and revenue, at any point throughout the year, our general fund and program accounts are either thoughtfully preparing for future needs, operating in full swing, or building stability. This will remain true moving forward as we review our business objectives to adjust to the new challenges we face. The Haverty Grace Recreation Committee is an active participant in our community. We host the annual spring egg hunt and Halloween parade contests that attract over 650 youth. Our programs participate in the city parades, they support the Kids Zone at First Friday, they hand out Thanksgiving Day meals in Haverty Grace, Perryville, and Aberdeen, they feed the homeless in Harford County, they clean up trash around town, they host local playdays, and even provide scholarships to our high school alumni to pursue their college degrees. In addition, our programs host numerous fundraising opportunities and activities throughout the year to support their operating expenses and provide opportunities to continue to offer our youth top-notch experiences. We've hosted popcorn sales, bull roasts, raffles, and even local restaurant nights, to name a few. And many of our programs offer sponsorships that provide our local businesses with opportunities to build their brand awareness. In closing, we came tonight to bring clarity with our information and to ensure our community is knowledgeable about the value and the impact the Haverty Grace Recreation Program brings to our community and its importance to our young people now more than ever. We are not, and have not, asked for a free ride, we are not looking for a handout, nor are we asking to misuse taxpayer dollars or bankrupt our town. We are asking for and looking forward to a continued partnership, one that has served both entities well over the past 57 years. We know we can do more together for our town and for our young We know we can do more together for our town and for our young people when we work side by side. Like all of you, our youth, our volunteers, our families and our alumni, no matter their zip code, put on their Haverty Grace gear. They enter facilities both local, around the county, state, region, and even nationally, representing this town, the town of Haverty Grace. And they do so with a whole lot of pride, as you can see behind me and all of those that took off because it's past their bedtime on a school night. So we truly thank you for your time this evening to be able to share this information with you.
Thank you, Council President.
Wait, we're not done talking to you guys. You can't walk away yet. Come back up here, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not.
I want to thank each and every one of you guys for coming out. And earlier, we had other kids out there talking about their community too. And it's not often you get kids that actually care or know about City Hall or even come and show up. And I'm proud of you guys on a school night. That's why we tried to get you guys out of here earlier. Now, you look at there where they said about the 17,000 hours of volunteer time. I swear, half of those were me. I don't have a kid in the program anymore, but I still go out there and I like working the booth on football games because I've got the loudest speakers in town. And I've gotten in trouble with the refs before because I always play Paradise City at the end of the game. But, you know, I love Parks and Rec, I love what you guys do. I love, you know, the community, how we come together around sports and do that. And finances are tough. I wish that the county could give more. We can look at our budget, see how we can help out in the future, and again, revisit the whole Star Center thing. I know that there are other grants that Steve Johnson and Andre Johnson had mentioned to me about trying to get through the state next year. We can do and try to bring that together. I still think we should ask Aberdeen for some money too. But you guys are doing great. It was a wonderful presentation. Thank you, and I want to thank each and every one of you little ones out there for coming out tonight, okay?
Councilmember Robertson?
Hey, Michelle, yeah, thank you for coming out. Kids, thank you all for coming out too. This is not an excuse to miss school tomorrow now. For the viewing public, what would be the best way, you know, to reach out, you know, to donate or something along those lines? Do you have like a mechanism set up online?
Yeah, so.
Like your fundraisers online somewhere where people can look at that?
No, that's a great question. So, right now, each of our individual programs do their own fundraising efforts. So at any point, we have, you want to donate to an individual program specifically, you can reach out to the head of that program. If you're looking to contribute to the general fund, then anyone on the board can assist with making that happen.
So we would just go on the website, get the contact info, and then contact the board?
Hundred percent, yep. Nice and easy. HDGrec.org.
Councilmember Boyer?
So, one of the things that I saw in there that's concerning and part of what the challenge is, is that the reduction of facilities that you have available. And specifically, looking at Harford County Board of Ed, and, you know, not just when we had the two schools, now into one that we have less physical space, but just the availability of the space. Can you talk to what you have done to engage our school board member? I know that I've talked about this issue with another school board member, Melissa Hahn, and she's very interested in knowing more about it. I don't have, I have a feeling that they're not as aware as we are acutely aware of what's happening in regards to the availability of space.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. And certainly, it's one that we work as a board to that communication with the county in the Parks and Rec Department. And they hear the same thing from everybody overwhelming. We are not alone in our lack of space. And some programs have a lot more availability, but they're also potentially bigger programs. And you see programs folding around the area because they don't have space or they might have a lack of participation. And so, one of the things that we have most treasured is the fact that we had the opportunity with the loss of space in the new high school, middle school, to be able to utilize that Star Center. It made a tremendous difference the past two years. And I think one of the things we can do, because one of the things we like to be able to do is you have now this presentation in front of you, that giving you guys that opportunity to dive a little deeper into it. We gave you snapshots and we gave you some different numbers from different lenses. But being able to take that information back with you, think through it, and at any point, we would love to come and sit down and talk through those types of things, figure out what opportunities exist for us, once everybody's kind of had a chance to process that, and then we can. I personally.
Oh, thank you. So what has Mrs. Alvarez, our school board representative, said to you all?
So, the way the recreation program works is they negotiate the space through Harford County Parks and Recs. It's been basically that mediator for them, so they are not the ones directly going to the school board. That is a great avenue, and that's one of the things we're looking at, is what are our next steps? And we felt one of our first steps, which is coming here to Haverty Grace Council and explaining because of the misinformation that's come out about the program, is where the program currently is. One of the things the city can help us with is identifying opportunities, like individuals to speak with, but also space. That's one of the biggest problems we have. It's not just indoor space, but also outdoor space. Facilities, you know, land, potentially, if the city is looking to redevelop parks and things like that, have those conversations and include the Recreation Committee in those conversations when you're having those discussions. So, they are working all these different avenues, and this was kind of like a first step to bring it. The county right now, I know with the middle school and high schools, some of the middle school programs, it sounds like they may be ending, so that might be an opportunity for us to get that space back. But again, that's an MOU that Harford County Parks is working with the school board. So, those actions are being taken, just they're not necessarily the ones directly talking at this point. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. Michelle and Tracy, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And young kids, I promise you I'll be as quick as I can be, okay? You're doing a great job. I don't know if you noticed, answer off the top of your head. I know you had in your PowerPoint slideshow that the county gave $40,000 the other year to help offset the rental cost for Star. But that was a one-time fee. The county executive Glassman on his way out was being very generous. What does the county normally give you? Do you know that answer? Every year, like cash?
Zero.
Okay. I'm a Haverty Grace, I'm a Parks and Rec, you know, Rec Committee parent. I mean, my oldest is 23, my youngest has graduated on Friday from high school, and my boy's in 10th grade. But we grew up dance and soccer and drama, and we've been, my family's been a beneficiary of the Rec Committee. We've been to all the bull roasts and fundraisers too. We did that. Now, from the eyes of this chair, and this comment, it isn't about our Rec Committee, more about the county help. Like, my son now, who's a sophomore, he travels all over, he plays club soccer with Pipeline. And, you know, yesterday I went to Kinder Park in Aron County, which is a county-owned park, and they had, you know, they had multiple turf fields, they had multiple batting cages. I mean, it looked like I was like in the most amazing park. I mean, I've been to Howard County, same thing, Montgomery County. And I remember when I went to the county executive five years ago, and I just said to him, "Don't tear down the building. We could use it for, you know, anything, you know." They were gonna just tear it down. And they just, two years early, just got done building that one on 155 towards Churchville, left-hand side, right before you get to the rural farm, or whatever it is, the highs. But the point is this, is like, the county really needs to step up because you don't just have young kids from Haverty Grace, you have almost half your kids are from outside city proper. And my message is, if anybody's listening, you know, and we've been soliciting our county council members, you know, we really, Harford County with their billion-dollar budget, okay, after to give money to the school board, half a billion-dollar budget, but their half a billion-dollar budget really needs to step up and help all of our local Parks and Recs because, you know, Haverty Grace has and will continue to support our local Rec Committee. You know, so again, this comment isn't anything you can do, but I'm just making it known to everybody what our local Rec Committee does for our kids, and just not just kids in the 21078, but the kids in the greater area. And I know all about Little League and how they absorbed Aberdeen because Aberdeen doesn't have a plan, and I've met with the Little League people, and I'm trying to talk to the school about letting them use the fields at Aberdeen Middle School. Like, it's almost like no one's communicating almost. We have the resources almost, but we're not communicating. So, appreciate being here tonight, and I'm really sorry how late it's been. You know, we can't always control these things, but thank you very much for being here. I want everyone to realize, or at least, you know, think about the greater picture of what we need to do for our kids. So, it just takes everybody. Haverty Grace will continue, will continue trying to get the county to chip in and make this a number-one first-class county when it comes to Parks and Rec.
So I will say to that point, and if you all get a chance, there is a study that Parks and Recs did for Harford County back in 2018. Actually, Barry Glassman put it together, was kind of the pushing point behind that. But one of the things that highlights is across the county, that like Michelle was indicating, there is this, one, we have a large increase in the population, population growth, and in this age group that we're trying to serve, has just grown tremendously. There is a call to identify land in there, like for every thousand acres, identify so much space for recreation and put to sports. So I would say that if we could work collectively to put pressure on them to really relook at that plan, because again, that was from 2018, and we know the population has grown significantly since then, and that a lot of their things, like the safety measures they want in there in that plan, and the things that the county emphasizes is important, that if we could get together and get the city's help maybe to help us push those conversations. Because when we talk with Park and Recs, they tell us, "You guys have a facility, you guys have fields, you have places to go." But we also have lots of children who could benefit and want to benefit from these programs, and we're having to the point where we have to turn them away. So we would really appreciate your assistance in that.
I'm glad you brought that up. Two weeks ago, we met county executive in my office. It was the first time he came here since he took office, and he met with Mr. Gambitori and myself. What was the first thing we asked him?
We have some ideas where there is surplus property within the city limits that's privately owned, that would work very well for rec fields. It's about six acres, I believe. And this is the second year we've asked for it. We asked for it last year, and we asked for it again this year with the new budget. So, we'll see where it goes.
Yep. The very first thing we asked the county executive. We sat down and had a hamburger in my office, and we said, "Hey, we need some more fields for our kids." That was the first thing we asked him. So, again, I'm glad you brought that up because that's on our top radar. So, okay, go home, go sleep. Thank you. All right. Okay, so, we did a little switch in the agenda, just so the Rec Committee kids wouldn't have to stay up too much longer tonight. But what we have left before we get to resolution ordinances, we have recognitions of promotions for police officers, and we have historic preservation awards. And so, what I'd like to do here is do the historic preservation awards next. I know. Well, some people were being paid and some people weren't, so. We'll get. I know. So, let's go ahead and do the historic preservation awards next, and I'd like to call forward historic preservation commission members. And. Everybody else?
Want to talk first, or you want me to call people up?
I think we're on fire, buddy, I'm ready.
Yeah, but I want to talk first.
Yeah, you have to talk about the.
I got pictures and stuff.
Right, you have to talk about the.
Yes, yes.
Well, you know, I'm Kathleen Lee. I'm part of the historic Haverty Grace area here. And every year, we give out awards to properties that have gone beyond what they should have and kept their properties in pretty much the original condition. Our first property is at 860 Ontario Street, and that's Fran Blythe. Is she here? There she is. It's weird, everybody might go home. Well, come on up. This is her home. This home was built in 1904 by the Silver family. That was the son of the original Mr. Silver, who had the big cannery here in town. She's kept it in beautiful condition, original clapboards, I checked myself, tapped on the clapboards. She's changed some windows, but who hasn't at this rate? And we're going to be giving her an award. Our second home is 317 Fountain Street. Kevin Purcell and Bonnie Bradford. They bought this home in. They bought this home in 2017. It had been vacant for 10 years. It's right behind my house, so I knew all about it. So it was just sitting there. And, but they were strong and they persevered, and they have fixed it into these beautiful colors. It was just this drab-looking house. And they've put historic colors on the exterior. The inside, they've totally redone, and it's just gorgeous on the inside. And they were on the candlelight tour a couple of years ago. Yes.
They're threatening to put it on again.
Oh, are they? Oh, well, be strong, be strong. 1100 South Adams is our last home, and as you can see, this is a beautiful colonial. It was built in 1939. And believe it or not, it has been in the original family ever since it was built. And they've done beautiful care of taking care of it. It's got a couple of replacement windows, but overhauled, the woodwork, everything is done. And if you notice behind it, there is a bear tree that has an osprey nest in it, which is just one of the wonderful features of this house. So these are our three award winners. We have plaques for them, and we have a little placard to put in their front yards also. Frances? Oh, there you are. Roger, do you want to bring forward her placard and her?
Can you put that on your house?
Let me go from front to center and take some photographs.
I did it for her.
1100 Adams Street, that's got to be down towards... Well, we're technically on page two, we didn't finish up page one yet. I think we got stuff, because it's been advertised, we have to have it. We have stuff there that's been advertised. Yeah, all the ordinances, they've been advertised online. My wife already knows I'm coming home late. Hey dude, I've been skipping caffeine because just having me sleep well, that ain't cutting it. When we go for a break, go back to Bill's, have a coke or something there. So I've been, I've been like cutting towers like crazy, eating salads every day, and like just for breakfast, I'm not joking. And I made guacamole, I made last night, I had that for breakfast, but I'm celebrating stuff. Going away for the weekend, down to Shu City, not eating right, it did not sit well with me. Oh, yeah. Because they don't need a specific vote, they don't need a specific vote on the amendments, because they're introduced as the... But if it was in red, added them on later.
Yep. Up next, chief. Chief? All right, next on the agenda, we have Havert Grace Police Department Promotions, with Chief Walter down here. First, I'd like to call up Kenneth Terry, being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Got Ken Terry? There we go. I knew I saw him.
Wait, thanks for your patience, Lieutenant. I'll tell you what we're going to do, we're going to make this official this evening, be sworn in in front of the council for your new position. Officer Terry, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. Read after me, when I say the word "I," please repeat the word "I," but also say your name. "I"?
"I," Kent Terry.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill requirement of...
Requirement of...
Office I'm about to assume...
Office I'm about to assume.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States. That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance... ...to the state of Maryland, support the Constitution thereof. That I will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice...
Fear or prejudice.
Discharge of duties...
Discharge of duties.
As a member of the rank of lieutenant, city Havert Grace, that's my ability. Congratulations, Lieutenant.
All right, next up, we have Anthony Myleskey, being promoted to the rank of sergeant.
Hey, while we're going to make some official... Hey, so I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand, please. Say the word "I," when I say the word "I," please repeat the word "I," also say your name. "I"? Do solemnly swear that I will fulfill requirement of office I'm about to assume. That I'll support the Constitution of the United States. That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance... ...to the state of Maryland, support the Constitution and laws thereof. That I will faithfully and impartially without fear of favor or prejudice... ...discharge of duties, member of rank of sergeant, city Havert Grace, that's my ability. All right, Sergeant?
Next up, we have Brian Adams, rank of corporal.
Okay, thanks for your patience. Officer Adams, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. Read after me, when I say the word "I," please repeat the word "I." "I"?
"I," Brian Adams.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill...
That I will fulfill.
Requirement of...
Requirement of.
Office I'm about to assume.
Office I'm about to assume.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll be faithful...
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution...
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice...
Without fear or favor or prejudice.
Discharge of duties...
Discharge of duties.
The rank of corporal...
Rank of corporal.
City Havert Grace...
City of Havert Grace.
My abilities, to the best of my ability.
What do you think about a short recess? That's what I was going to say. Council, do you have a motion for a short recess?
Second.
All those in favor, say "aye."
"Aye."
All right, all be in favor. I'm going to call a short recess right now, time is 9:25, we resume at 9:35. Thank you.
Yeah, he did that.
That's right.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is now nine forty-one. We are returning from a recess to continue the June fifth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting marathon. How much money you raised now? Phones keep ringing. So we are rolling into the meat of this agenda, which is resolutions and ordinances. So we have several resolutions on the calendar this evening. And item A is a counter resolution approving a license agreement for encroachment on the city right of way at five six nine Lewis Lane. And to introduce this ordinance, I'll hand this off to the chair of the planning committee, Councilor Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I am requesting that we table this until next council meeting so we have an opportunity to speak with Tim Boursier to have more clarification regarding an aspect of this resolution.
Hold on a second. Council have a motion to table by Councilmember Shenegas. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Council President. Under a table motion, there's no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against the table motion, say nay. Motion to table counter resolution concerning license agreement for encroachment on the city right of way at five six nine Lewis Street is approved by Council five zero and affirmative. Okay, Councilmember Shenegas, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item B, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Today, I would like to introduce a calendar resolution concerning approving a lease agreement for an existing HVAC unit and related utilities in the city right of way of the corner of five sixty-nine Lewis Street and Stokes Street.
Council have a motion by Councilor Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce a calendar resolution concerning approving a lease agreement for an existing HVAC unit and related utilities in the right of way at the current corner of five six nine Lewis Street and Stokes Street. Any questions or comments on the motion introduced? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce resolution carries five zero and affirmative. This is a resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland pursuant to section thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter and the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland for approval of a lease agreement for an existing HVAC unit and related utilities in the city right of way at the corner of five six nine Lewis Street and Stokes Street to authorize the mayor to execute such a lease. Council, this will be Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight, two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight.
Mr. Mayor, since we tabled the last resolution, this one being oh seven.
Oh seven. Thank you very much. That makes sense. Okay, two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven. Thank you. Two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven. And Council, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven. Okay, question, motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments about this resolution? Councilmember Shenegas.
The purpose of this permit is to approve a lease agreement for an HVAC system installed by the previous owners without permission. Upon approval of the new owners, the new owners will enter into a ten-year lease agreement at one dollar per square foot and a fifty-dollar admin fee.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions or comments? Very good. Council, we'll do a roll call vote on, I'm sorry, Councilmember Boyer.
So how was that figured out?
The planning department, Tim Boursier.
No, I mean, the, like, the amount of money, because that's not like any of the other ones.
Okay. This is a different situation because the previous owners had it installed. And with the fact that the new owners had to come up with a plan, it is one dollar per square foot and any space that is in the city's right of way, up to three hundred dollars is what they're going to be charged. So, Mr. Gamatory, do you have anything to say in regards to that?
No, so this is from chapter seventy that we just passed, the fee schedule, where it speaks specifically to encroachments. And this is one of the first ones since the passage of section seven, or chapter seventy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyer, any other questions?
So let me just reiterate. So, and maybe I just don't remember it clearly in the fee schedule. So moving forward, anyone for anything is going to be one dollar per square foot of land. In addition to that, the fifty dollars.
There's a fifty-dollar filing fee and then the three hundred dollars. It's a dollar per square foot or three hundred, and I think the language says whichever is the, the, the most.
Per year.
Per year.
Per perpanduity, like forever. That's what we're going to do.
As long as they want to maintain the lease. Now, this, in particular, this isn't like some of the leases where somebody's front porch is encroached on the city property, which the previous one that we tabled kind of spoke to that. Part of the house was built on the city property, part of the front porch was built on the city property. So in those cases, that there was, there'd be no impact fee for that. This is clearly by choice. The owner has decided to encroach on city property and therefore, based on conversations we've had with the city attorney over a period of time where there's a, there has to be some compensation for an individual that chooses to use city property exclusively and not allow the public to use it. And that's what this, this represents here. They could have easily not put the HVAC system there and put it somewhere else on the property.
Now, it's just that I remember us having a discussion in regards to exclusive use, and that was completely tabled as far as the discussion. So it seems as though the exclusive use has come up in a different format that I wasn't aware of, and that is disturbing to me.
Can I add? Resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-one lists the one dollar per square foot, which is consistent with a prior resolution that the council, previous councils have done. And that is the resolution that's also cited in the introduction to the, the recitals of the ordinance. And that is just consistent with the policy. That pre-zoning changes or pre-zoning encroachments have been effectively grandfathered by most councils. This was an improvement done to a home. They didn't even get pre-approval to put it there. So therefore, now, rather than asking them to remove it at this time, when they replace the system, we're not going to necessarily grandfather that. But if they're currently not going to remove it, then that will be leased. So this is a new encroachment.
I mean, I completely understand all of that.
And that's already in the resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-one.
It's the exclusive use discussion coming back up.
The exclusive use is imposed by, by state law. So if there is not, if you're precluding the public from accessing a city right of way, then you are, you are, you are causing a public nuisance. You're preventing the public by virtue of maybe the city need to expand the street, put a sidewalk in, whatever. You're precluding a public use. If you're precluding a public use, you pretty much have to charge for it because you're letting somebody encroach on a city public right of way.
And again, I'm just reiterating that this was all part of an ordinance before that we were discussing that was, that was put on hold.
No, the fees were part of the ordinance. The exclusive use was taken out.
Right.
In spite of that, there's still a requirement of if you're encroaching on city property, there has to be a public purpose for that in order for it to be done for free. So it can't be done for free, and the ordinance, the pre-existing resolution, already talks to the use.
But again, the whole discussion was in regards to exclusive use, and there was a concern within the community in regards to that. So now, we by de facto have it, correct?
No, there's no, there is no authority to grant exclusive use to any one citizen against the public if there's no public purpose. And this is a private HVAC system encroaching on city property. And actually, we have another example of this in the city when an extension was put on the property at, the Creole de Grau building was done by a prior owner. That is a lease that's renewed every few years, and they pay commercial rate for that.
So moving forward, anybody?
Rather than, rather than asking them to take it out, that person, to the extent that's still used as a restaurant, it's going to be, yeah.
I hear you. But moving forward, anybody who builds or uses public land, we now are implementing an exclusive use policy?
We're not implementing it. That's already a state law.
All right. But we have not been implementing it previously.
Correct, because we, we didn't understand that to be the case.
So, okay, thank you. Thank you.
No problem. Council President?
So if I could just add a little clarity, when we did the, was it section seventy, the, the fee schedule, all those little changes I added were, were part of that. So everything in red, it's, I've said it probably about fifty times. I know it's probably my fault if I bore people, but it is part of that. And I'm a little confused myself because I know that there was a plan to, talking about, do that, a whole exclusive lease about, there was a property over on Stokes where, you know, they wanted to extend all the way up to the sidewalk, and we tabled that portion about whether or not we were going to, you know, you know, sell the property back in de facto wise with the, with the lease. And that's, this is, that's different. This guy just, like, literally put a HVAC, and we're not making him tear it out. So we're saying, okay, well, that's, this falls under this previous ordinance and falls under the fee schedule, these two things. So it's one dollar per square foot, fifty dollar for, for that. So there, that other bill was still tabled that we had talked about, and it's never been brought back up. So I think that's just a little different, but I see where you're tracking, absolutely.
Fair is fair.
Yeah. I think this is a little more extensive, though.
Well, if we're going to implement it for one person, we should be implementing it for all. And that's going to cause a slippery slope.
So, if I could, Mayor. So part of, I think, if you could rewind and take out my word of exclusivity, what this is, is an individual has encroached on a city property, city-owned property, and there is now a fee that you must pay for that. That was resolved in several resolutions, and it was structured by a fee in the fee schedule. We removed, in the definitions, as you recall, exclusive, non-exclusive, because council didn't like that terminology. So that went away. This, this type of arrangement has been enforced going back, as the city attorney said, to the Ken's Steakhouse and Chipperelli's before that. So it's not anything new. Where, the way we have been writing our leases since Ms. Ishak's come on board is we've put definitive timelines on them. So it used to be like a twenty-five-year lease or a thirty-year lease. So now, most of the leases, I think, are five or, or less, so that we start picking up all these as we, we start going through them. So when somebody comes back around for a lease agreement for city property, then they're going to get held accountable for what the fee is to, I don't want to use the word exclusively, for them to use the property and nobody else being allowed to.
Yes.
And I'm going to read right from Resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-one, which is currently an existing resolution of the council. Definitions, lease is any agreement or other written instrument which grants a leasehold interest in city-owned property rights of way easements or others, or structures to another. Such leasehold interests include the granting of a possessory right to occupy the property to the exclusion of others, including members of the general public. Leases must conform with the requirements and limitations of Charter section seventy-six and the City Code. And that's the current resolution from two thousand twenty dash twenty-one.
Slippery slope.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor. Ultimately, the goal is for people to get license permits before they start building. That's, this situation, you know, is problematic in that respect, and that's why it's come to our attention. So I just want to say that, you know, people that are following the guidelines and going to the planning commission and getting permits, they're doing the right thing, and, you know, they're going through the steps, and that's helpful for citizens to keep things fair and equitable to everyone. So hopefully, going forward, people will do that, and we won't have to run into issues that cause concern, so.
Councilmember Booker?
Mayor Martin, thank you. So if I'm reading this right, and I've read through the entire packet, it looks like that the city is really leading forward to actually, to help the citizen out. There was a mistake made, and they're not bound by any type of, of a term. So, so when I read through this, it was, when, once a citizen had, had enough liquid assets, that they could actually move that out of the right of way, then the lease would be terminated. Is that, is that correct?
The, well, the idea is, is that rather than put the, the citizen to the expense now, they can leave that there. It's already, it's actually, I think it was, may have been installed by a prior, by the prior owner, immediately prior owner. But in any event, rather than put them through the expense of that, it was easier to just lease this, and then when they go to replace that unit, because they do wear out, that it will, it's, I think it's in the lease, if you read it, the, it says that it will, it should go back on their property. So it should never been installed there to begin with. So while it's there, they can, they have the choice. If they don't want to pay the lease, they can, they can remove it now, but we thought it would be easier for them to.
Absolutely. That's to the benefit of the citizen, so I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Booker. Any other questions or comments? Council, roll call vote on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven. Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call, five zero and affirmative, counter resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven is adopted by council. Item C, Council President.
Mr. Mayor, council, a few citizens we have left. Let's see here. I move that we introduce a calendar resolution concerning ratifying the additional terms of settlement of the opioid multi-district litigation.
Council have a motion by the Council President, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce a calendar resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against say nay. Motion introduce carries five zero and affirmative. Council, this will be known as calendar resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight, two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland pursuant to section thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter and the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland to ratify additional terms of settlement of the opioid multi-district litigation. Council have a motion to adopt two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Motion by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Council President?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to yield the floor to our esteemed attorney for explanation about the lawsuit.
Mrs. Shaq?
Okay, this is a follow-up to the prior settlement that was approved by the city council, and the city has since received funds from the state fund toward opioid remediation. And so what happened was that initial settlement was with some of the manufacturers. This settlement is with some of the distributors. There was a little bit of a time crunch in getting the papers back to council, and then the, the state, state attorney general's office was involved, so we had to get papers back to them. And in all of that shuffle, we didn't bring it to council before everything was signed. So this is really a ratification. The terms of the settlement are quite extensive. I linked in the memo that was sent, I believe, there's links to the actual lengthy online documents that you can read. But suffice it to say, because of the great retainer agreement we have with outside council, obtaining the settlement funds is not really costing the city anything because it's a contingent matter. And so these will be added to the funds we've already received from prior, the prior settlement. And I think the numbers I saw from Mr. De Hordy, I don't have them in front of me now, but it's over four, we've already received over four thousand dollars. So we've received two payments. One was four, and one was about between three and five thousand. So we received two payments already from the first part of the settlement. So this is an additional settlement with additional parties. And then there's still outlining, there's still other potential parties out there that we can settle with, too. So it's not over. This is just kind of like the second leg of it. So we're just seeking ratification of that second leg.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ishak. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Council, we're going to do a roll call on counter resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight. Again, thank you, Ms. Ishak. Appreciate the background on that. Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, counter resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight is adopted by council. Thank you. We go to item D, charter amendment. Council President?
Mr. Mayor, council, I move to introduce a charter amendment, resolution number two nine three, concerning requiring budget amendments by ordinance for second reading and adoption.
Council have a motion by the Council President, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce a charter amendment resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce charter amendment, resolution number two ninety-three on second reading carries five zero and affirmative. It's a resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Maryland Constitution, Article eleven E, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and the Havertagh Grace City Charter, section nineteen, amending in part section thirty-seven F and nineteen A of the city charter, generally pertaining to budget amendments, repealing the requirement that budget amendments be approved by resolution, requiring budget amendments to be approved by ordinance. So, council, have a motion to adopt charter amendment resolution two ninety-three on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Questions or comments? Council President?
This charter amendment resolution is just a bit of housekeeping. The state requires our budget amendments to be done by ordinance, and we've always been doing it per our charter by resolution, so.
Thank you, Council President. Any further questions or comments? Council, we're going to do a roll call vote on charter resolution two ninety, two ninety-three. Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, charter amendment, charter amendment resolution two ninety-three concerning requiring budget amendments by ordinance is adopted and approved by council. Item E, Council President?
Sir, I move to introduce charter amendment resolution number two nine four concerning authorizing certain personnel to enter into certain agreements for second reading and adoption.
Council, have a motion by the Council President, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce charter amendment resolution two ninety-four on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction of this charter resolution? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion introduce charter amendment resolution two ninety-four carries five zero and affirmative. This is a resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Maryland Constitutional Article eleven E, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and the Havertagh Grace Charter, section nineteen, amending in part section thirty-seven G of the city charter, generally pertaining to the execution of the annual budget ordinance, authorizing certain people, personnel, I'm sorry, authorizing certain personnel to enter into certain agreements, authorizing the creation of administrative rules and procedures to carry out subsection. Council, have a motion to adopt charter amendment resolution two ninety-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Council President?
This ordinance specifically, this creates administrative processes for the director of administration to carry out the daily duties here at City Hall, especially pertaining to the budget.
Thank you very much, Council President. Anybody else? Council, we'll have a roll call on charter amendment resolution two ninety-four. Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, charter amendment resolution two ninety-four is adopted on second reading. Item thirteen, ordinances. Item A, ordinance concerning establishing a city budget. Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to introduce on first reading the FY twenty-four city budget.
Council, have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion introduce an ordinance carries five zero and affirmative. Council, this will be known as ordinance eleven oh nine, one one zero nine. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace by authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and section thirty-seven of the Havertagh Grace City Charter for the purpose of establishing a city budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four by designating the annual projection of the anticipated revenues and proposed authorized expenses for city Havertagh Grace for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Council have a motion to adopt on first reading.
So moved.
Ordinance eleven oh nine. Motion by Councilmember Robertson, and seconded by the CP. Council President, ring siren. Council, is there any questions or comments on the first reading of the budget? Councilmember Robertson?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Just for the pleasure of the viewing audience, you know, the budget process is, it's created by the mayor and the administration, submitted to council, council holds a couple of work sessions, public hearings, and then we move into June whereby, by the end of the month, the budget has to be passed prior to the start of the fiscal year, which starts July one for the state of Maryland. And don't worry, it's, nothing's being finalized tonight, so citizens will still have the opportunity to come and speak ahead of the next council meeting for the public hearing on ordinance eleven oh nine.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? All right, well said. So, council, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote on the first reading of the ordinance. Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, city council ordinance eleven oh nine, one one oh nine, is adopted and approved on first reading. This is the budget ordinance. So council, president, the way the budget ordinance works is, the charter says we have to pass it at the second meeting in June. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a public hearing on the off-meeting night, which is next Monday, July, I'm sorry, June twelfth. June twelfth, six o'clock here at the council chambers. One ordinance only. That'll be ordinance eleven oh nine, which is the budget. Okay? Don't drag us in any other ordinance. No, I'm kidding. Now, so anyway, the budget ordinance, public hearing, next Monday. Now, so anyway, the budget ordinance, public hearing next Monday, June 12th, six o'clock, City Hall, and then it will be on the second reading at the final council meeting on June 19th, in case anybody wants to speak on that too. There'll also be a public hearing, July 19th, June 19th, right?
June, yeah, Juneteenth, we're off. That's right. I forgot.
Man.
Yeah, we're off Juneteenth.
Okay, all right. My mistake.
My mistake.
All right. We were all sitting in the office last night, or just before the meeting, going over this. So June 20th, which is a Tuesday night, because June 19th is a federal holiday. So the next meeting will be June 20th. For the second reading, that's what I'm talking about. So let me, let me clarify this one more time. We just read the budget for the city into the record on first reading. You can come next Monday night here on June 12th at six o'clock if there's anything you want to say about the budget. If not, you can also have another chance to say something on the budget when the council brings it up for a second reading and adoption at the June 20th council meeting, which is a Tuesday night. Okay, just want to clarify on the budget. Thank you. Sorry about that. Item C has been removed. And that takes us...
We skipped item B.
B.
I skipped B, I'm sorry.
And I made you to sing that.
All right. I was just saying, item C has been removed.
That's right.
Okay. Pardon me. Okay, item B, all right. Item B, and that'll go to, Council President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to introduce an ordinance concerning amending Chapter 162, solid waste, for first reading. So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by the Council President, and I have a second by Council Member Booker. Okay, this is for introduction of an ordinance concerning amending Chapter 162, solid waste. Questions or comments on introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance concerning amending Chapter 162 on solid waste carries five zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority, Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend Chapter 162, solid waste. Counsel, I have a motion to adopt, which will be known as Ordinance 1110, 1110, on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Council Member Shenegas. Questions or comments on this ordinance? Council President?
All right. So who's with me when you guys on Wednesdays, I know my trash pickups on Wednesdays, you guys go to take your cans out, and you're on your way to work, and you, your neighbors had their stuff out the night before, and their trash is gone, and now you've got to wait a week to dump your trash. Here's our problem. The charter says that pickup is at 7:00 a.m., but our city contract with Barton Felter is a little bit different, so we're just changing the, the, we're amending Chapter 162 of Section 7 to reflect whatever the contract is for our solid waste pickup. That's what it is. Am I correct?
That, that is correct, and Section 162-13-1, which is the solid waste tipping fee.
I thought that was a different one I had on my agenda, sir.
No, same ordinance.
Okay. So then if that's the same ordinance, then that's fine. I'm spun up on that too. So the county raised our rates by $40 a ton, and unfortunately, it's trickled down. We need to make sure that we're, we're covering the cost because we, we have to by law. So the rates are going up just a little bit for the tipping fee, which is what it costs us to dump the trash per ton.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Council Mayor Boyer?
I just want to point out something that I find refreshing, and that is our line 66. It's not new, it's something that currently exists. It shall be unlawful to locate or place containers in such a way as to obstruct either pedestrian or vehicular traffic, or to create a safety here as here too. So I know one of the things that's, a lot of complaints come in is that the trash cans are left in the middle of the road, or left in the road, and it's refreshing to see that it's actually written here that it's not supposed to be left that way. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel will do a roll call on ordinance 1110, 1110, on first reading. Council Member Booker? Council President?
Yes.
Council Member Robertson?
Yes.
Council Mayor Boyer?
Yes.
Council Mayor Shenegas?
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, city ordinance 1110 is adopted on first reading. And Council President, we'll have the public hearing on this at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be Tuesday, June 20th. All right, thank you.
Got plans for the 19th?
Not yet, why? You got something going on?
I'm saying, you got a free night.
Bite me over your house?
Sure. Come on.
All right. Item C was removed.
Item C's removed, sir.
We're going to go to item D. Item D, ordinance concerning Chapter 205 zoning, and Counsel Shenegas?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce an ordinance concerning amending Chapter 205 for zoning through lots, fences, in the first reading.
Counsel, I have a motion by Council Member Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. This is an ordinance, this is an introduction of an ordinance concerning amending Chapter 205 zoning through lots, fences, and this is a first reading. Any questions or comments on the motion to introduce this ordinance? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance carries five zero and affirmative. This would be known as Ordinance 1111, 1111. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend City Code, Section 205 zoning. Counsel, I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1111 on first reading.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
What's that? Did you? You did, okay. Sorry, Council Member Booker got there before you. So motion by the Council President, seconded by Council Member Booker. Thank you, Council Member Booker. I thought I heard you say something. All right. Motion by Council President, seconded by Council Member Booker. This is a motion to adopt on first reading, ordinance 1111. Question or comments? Council Mayor Shenegas?
I just want to say that this is essentially to put language through to make it under, more understandable to the citizens. The line separating the lot from the street right of way upon which it fronts, in the case of a corner or through lot, it shall be the line separating said lot from the street right of way as determined by the Department of Planning to the front yard at the time of a request of a building permit. As with a lot, the through lot, it has to be with a 36-foot right of way or greater upon the two roads, again, with a 36 right of way or greater, and which do not intersect at the boundary of the lot, or which is bounded on one side by a road with a 36-foot right of way or greater, and on the opposite side by a navigable waterway, and which has no rear lot line. So essentially, these lines need to be determined before you come in and ask for a building permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Shenegas. Any other questions or comments? Council Mayor Boyer?
Can you explain that a little bit more, so it's not as much jargon for the general public, what that really means?
Okay. I'll do my best. All right. A through lot, it used to say double frontage. Okay, so in the case of a corner, you have a corner, and you have a through lot, like a, one of the lanes. It shall be a line separating the lot from the street right of way as determined by the Department of Planning, to be the front yard. So for instance, on the Commerce Street area, where we have the houses in the back and the front, and what's the front, what's the back? Okay, it's been some controversy lately. So that determination will be based on when you go to ask for a permit, what is actually your front yard, what is your side yard, et cetera? So...
And that's determined by the Department of Planning, not the homeowner, correct?
Yes, because at the time, there's some that have their address on the front or on the side, so which street is actually their, their postal address, which is their front yard. So yeah, it has to be looked at in consideration to the actual permit before it's submitted.
So it's the Department of Planning's purview to make that decision, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Explanation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mayor Boyer, and good job, Council Mayor Shenegas. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Counsel, this is ordinance 1111. I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Council Member Booker. This is for the motion to adopt on first reading. Here comes a roll call. Council Mayor Boyer?
Yes.
Council Mayor Shenegas?
Yes.
Council Member Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Council Member Robertson?
Yes.
By roll call, five zero and affirmative. Ordinance 1111 concerning amending Chapter 205 zoning through lots, fences, well, is adopted on first reading, and therefore, when we bring it up at the next, or I'm sorry, there'll be a public hearing for it at the next council meeting, which will be Tuesday, June 20th, at 7:00 p.m. Okay, Counsel, that is it for ordinances this evening. We go to old business. And I'm going to hand this off, there's a special event under old business. I'm going to hand it off to Director of Administration, Mr. Gamatoria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the purposes of making everything kind of work together, the farmer's market has requested to move their operation to the Star Center on Congress Avenue, the day of the Running Festival, Susquehanna River Running Festival. There's primarily no additional cost to the city, but the farmer's market, folks wanted to bring that before council and get their blessing before they start to advertise the movement within their organization. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamatoria. And Counsel, I have a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Member Booker, seconded by Council Member Shenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Special event under old business regarding the farmer's market, change of location to the Star Center on September 23rd. That request is approved, five zero by council. Item 15, new business, we have a couple items here. Mr. Gamatoria?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Before you this evening, we have two special events. The first one is the Youth Sailing School Program, Family Picnic. This is sponsored by the Youth Sailing Program. Captain Rick Wall was here earlier, still is, speaking on behalf of the Sailing School for this fundraiser that they're having. It'll be set up on the 25th of June. At 8:00 a.m., the event will be from 1:00 to 4:00, breakdown at 6:00 p.m. It'll be located at Hutchins Park. Approximately 100 people will participate. There will be food, service, and alcohol. Within the packet is the Certificate of Liability Insurance, along with the call sheet for DPW and PD. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamatoria. Counsel, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Council Member Booker. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Havertide Grace Youth Sailing Program, Family Picnic fundraiser, June 25th, 2023, 1:00 to 4:00, Hutchins Memorial Park, is approved, five zero and affirmative. Thank you, Counsel. Mr. Gamatoria?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Counsel, the last special event application is the Annual Animal Blessing and Pet Expo. This is sponsored by the Havertide Grace United Methodist Church. The onsite contact person will be our own Tammy Brinkman. They are a 501(c)(3). The community event to bless pets and provide pet information and demonstrations to the public. This will be held at Concord Point Park. Setup is on the 10th of September. At 10:00 a.m., the event is from 12:30 to 3:30 with a breakdown at 4:30. About 60 to 80 people are anticipated to participate. The Certificate of Liability Insurance, MAP, and the costing sheet is within the packet as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamatoria. Counsel, I have a motion to approve.
So moved. That was me.
Thank you. I have a motion by Council Member Robertson?
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Pray for them bitches.
Animal Blessing and Pet Expo, September 10th, 2023, 12:30 to 3:30, Concord Point Park, carries five zero and affirmative. Okay. We're going to go to item 16 this evening, Director's Reports. Mr. Gamatoria?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'll be brief. I just want to thank the Counsel, Ms. Ishak, and also Ms. Brinkman for the extensive amount of material that went into this meeting's agenda. It was very, very timely in the fact that there was a lot of moving parts to it. I do want to report that several meetings ago, we had talked about public safety with the rail system and rail derailments on the railroad. We witnessed a number of them back in the, you know, between the first part of January and early part of the, the spring. At our request, and working with the Department of Emergency Services, they have scheduled a derailment tabletop seminar that'll feature Havertide Grace. So the actual derailment will occur here. It'll impact our water system and impact our bridges, so it's going to be a pretty extensive tabletop. City Hall, and I'll be reaching out to the council members at which to attend, are invited to participate. It's up at the EOC, and I know the chief's been involved with a number of them over the years, in a previous life, my hazmat life I was as well. And it's an opportunity to participate either in your field as a councilperson, if the city attorney would be there, then she, she would participate, the mayor, the Director of Administration, or any of our folks. It'll be a sort of a live tabletop exercise where you, a lot of thinking on the fly. Then they do several of these, they'll kind of ramp them up, they'll start kind of small and kind of ramp up, and it's very educational. Amtrak is putting it on, they're sponsoring the, sort of this, the whole seminar piece of it. So I was glad to see the quick response by Rick Ayers and the folks up at DES to help us out on this. And I think it'll make our citizens feel a little more reassured, especially since we have the rail systems cutting through the several parts of the city, and we have had three or four derailments here over the last 40 years, so.
Sorry, Steve, did you have a date for that?
I, I'll send it out, I believe it's the 26th of July, I think, but I'll send everyone a personal email.
Thank you.
Following up with that. And then just lastly, I'd like to remind the citizens that if you plan to put up a sign, whether or not how innocuous or not, you need to come through the Department of Planning. We've noticed a number of signs are starting to pop back up for different organizations that are not either signed up for an event, or they're not even within the city. So we have Earl pick those up, and they typically can be found here at City Hall for about a week, and if no one claims them, then we set them out for Barton Felter to take, take away. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gamatoria. We go to Ms. Bridget Johnson, Director of Economic Development Tourism.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel, citizens at home. I will also keep my comments brief tonight. Earlier, we heard from the Havertide Grace Parks and Rec Commission, and I wanted to follow up... to follow up on something that was mentioned during that presentation. Our department has partnered with the commission on a grant proposal from T-Mobile Hometown Grant in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars to construct a sixteen-by-twenty-four cedar pavilion for use as a meeting place for youth aged eleven through eighteen. This is a wish list, so it's simply a grant request. There was no matching funds, which we like. This pavilion would go at the North Park. The pavilion would look like a treehouse constructed with cedar beams imposed with a metal naturally stained roof. The proposed project addresses the problem of lack of activities available for local youth, and we are leveraging our partnerships with the Havity Grace Youth Commission, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Havity Grace Recreation Committee. We also spoke with, I believe it was, I always get my captains mixed up, may have been crass, to get the numbers on the rise of graffiti in the city over the last two years. So we're hoping that we can have an impact as well in finding locations and activities for the youth of Havity Grace. We are also currently working on a grant proposal due to DHCD on June twenty-first in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to install a permanent precast concrete restroom facility at Hutchins Park. So we talked about this earlier this year to replace the restrooms that are currently there. That number might be a little low, but that is the maximum that we could ask for from this grant. So we are pursuing that funding. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, we had another successful First Fridays on Friday, June second. As always, I thank DPW and the Police Department who are truly our partners in pulling off that event. And if there are no questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson?
All right.
Yes, we did have a great First Fridays. Absolutely, thank you. Lot going on on Friday night. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you to our new Deputy Director of Finance. You've been with us how long, a month, maybe?
A little bit over a month.
A little bit over a month.
Yeah.
And it's a pleasure to have you here tonight, filling in for Mr. Hordy. And I'd like to introduce everybody to Abdul Adabi.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, the council members. It's great to be here. It's been a doozy today. This is my first one, and you know.
Well, they're not all this long. I just want to let you know, this is a-
Tell your wife what to expect.
Well, I'm from Owens Mills.
I wasn't gonna say anything and scare you and be like, all right, everybody, that's a quick meeting. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, sir.
I don't want to keep you guys too long, so I'm gonna go over the funds, major funds for the day. In terms of general fund, we are having a fund balance of two point six million, which is slightly below compared to the last reported of five hundred and eighty thousand. That's partially because the main income tax hasn't been received yet, but it's coming pretty soon. But however, we still are above budget, about one point two billion, I'm sorry, one point two million. I wish it was a billion, but hey.
I like the first one.
That'd be great.
That's them already.
In terms of actual revenues and what's budgeted, we're up a hundred and thirty-five thousand. In terms of actual expenses and budget expenses, we are down seven twenty-four, just in terms of why we are down five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But again, that's in large part due to the main income tax distribution. We just stayed processed last week, so we are soon to receive it. In terms of the water and sewer, current fund balance is one point three million dollars, which is slight in terms of budget estimates of five hundred and seventy thousand. We are up in terms of last comparison of five hundred and twenty-six thousand. That's partially due with the billings that came in and got posted. In terms of the actual revenues compared to what was budgeted, we are up eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand. In terms of the actual expenses, in terms of the budget, we are down twenty-eight thousand. That's why we have an uptick of nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. In terms of the Marina Fund, our current budget fund balance is six hundred and three thousand. Comparison to last projections, we are up thirty-eight, actually down thirty-eight thousand. In terms of the actual revenues compared to the what was budgeted, we are down slightly, a hundred and eleven thousand. In terms of the actual expenses, what in terms of what's budgeted, we are up twenty-seven thousand. And that is why we are down thirty-eight thousand for as of June fifth. That is all I have. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Adabi?
Thank you. As the police chief said, the new bean counter. But I'm assuming this is the deputy bean counter.
Deputy bean counter. More like chia seeds at this level government. Thank you, sir, very much. I appreciate being with you this evening. And we have a celebrity from way back joining us this evening, Mr. Tim Whitty.
Episode three.
Boy, did you pick a good one to fill in for.
That's right. I did.
Man, Tim's gonna love this meeting tonight. How you doing, Tim?
Good, good. I will keep my comments short, but we are updating the Capital Projects story line that we put up, that we do have that. We call it like a storybook, but it's basically the, of all the capital projects going to the city, we identify them, and then we put the, where the status of it is, whether it's in, you know, some form of procurement, you know, request for proposal, you know, whatever bids are out or, you know, completed or whatever, under construction. And so I'm gonna go ahead and tomorrow, meet with Stephanie. We'll put our projects in. Patrick is coming back, I believe, on Wednesday, and we'll sit down with him Wednesday and Thursday and get updates on the projects that he has and update the system. And then we'll run that by Director EJ, and then I'll get that stuff over to you and we'll post it on the website. So we should have everything together by the end, by sometime next week. Okay? That's all I have. If anybody has any other questions.
Are you speaking directly to me?
I am.
Any questions for Tim? All right, Mr. Whitty, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council. And I've actually enjoyed having Mr. Whitty here again because I've missed the chair squeaking, the sighing. The only thing that he didn't do was throw his keys up in the air and go, ah, like he's done in the past. But welcome. So just also to keep it really, really short, our summer safety camp that we have going from July, the tenth to the fourteenth, is completely booked up, which is a really good thing because it shows that the kids are coming back and we really do enjoy that. So we're really looking forward. We revamped it a little bit, so I hope to make, that it gets even bigger and better like it did in the past. The other thing that I wanted to announce right now so people can start planning, Tuesday, August the first, between five and eight o'clock, is National Night Out. And if you're not aware, or if you do not know anything about National Night Out, it is actually a great community police campaign, if you want to call it, that we have done for years. It's also done nationally, and that gives communities an opportunity to just meet with the police. We have a great time, and you can do anything from having a cookout, cornhole tournaments, bike rodeos for the kids. And if you haven't met your neighbors, it's a good opportunity to do it. And it's just fun. It really truly is. So if anybody is interested, if any of the communities or the neighborhoods are interested in participating in National Night Out, we usually have two or three very strong neighborhoods that do that. But if you want to join along, it's not that difficult, not a whole lot of heavy lifting. We'll be more than happy to help you out with that. Just give us a call at the Police Department, the four-one-oh-nine-three-nine-two-one-two-one, and ask for Corporal Gertz, and we will start working out with you as far as what you want to plan and how much you or how little you want to do. And that would be it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Council President?
Chief, you guys still have the bike program going on? We fix up bikes for kids in the neighborhoods?
Yes.
Got some for you.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Mayor Robertson?
One really stupid question. Torch Run, did that happen already?
No, the Torch Run is, I believe we've got it scheduled for June the twenty-first. So we're gonna see you there after the council meeting on the twentieth, then bright and early the next day, run in with the torch. No?
I mean, you know, we'll talk offline.
Okay.
I want to get a shirt off, y'all. That's why I was-
Not a problem. I'll make sure that you get one, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Poor mind of work today.
Okay, we're gonna go to item seventeen, business from the mayor. Given the hour and given that I've already said a lot already tonight, I'm gonna hold my comments and just move right to council comments.
Oh, sorry. One moment.
That's right. So we're gonna go to Councilmember Shenegas.
Good evening, Mayor, council, administration, and those of you that are still here in the audience and folks at home. It was a wonderful weekend. It started off with the pride of Baltimore docking in Havity Grace. It was a wonderful way to see the past represented with the present, and it led into a great First Friday. Thank you, community, for making everything special, and I look forward to more good times here in Havity Grace this summer. And welcome, Mr. Deputy Bean Counter.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shenegas. I'd like to move on to Councilman Robertson.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. I am really, 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 really sorry to do this, but we will be really quick too, because I want to throw out a couple of events that are coming up, namely, at the one place that you can find me if you can't find me here or at home. The Susquehanna River View Car Cruise, basically like a classic car show, something that will be happening at the American Legion, the second Thursday through, from June to October, this coming Thursday at six PM is the very first one. So if you have a classic car, if you like classic cars, come on out to the Legion, hang out, check them out, Thursdays, six PM, second Thursday of every month. Father's Day, June eighteenth, is Island Tiki Deck Party, and it's featuring the Island Jack Band Trio, so kind of like Jimmy Buffett-style music. Starts at one PM. Gonna have hot dogs, hamburgers, all that kind of stuff for a small fee, but bring your dads. If you're a dad, bring your family. If you're not a dad, you still just want to hang out, come on out, bring your best wine shirt, and have fun, Sunday, June eighteenth, from one to five PM. And finally, the American Legion is doing something new this year in celebration of Juneteenth. So Monday, June nineteenth, from twelve to four PM, the American Legion will be hosting a meal. There is a fee involved with that. That's fifteen dollars per person, open to the public. Includes guest speakers, Dr. Iris Barnes from the Ozana School Museum, and Winona Hilton Stanley, which is a descendant of Alfred B. Hilton. And, you know, it's kind of, she's gonna do a little bit of a talk about Alfred B. Hilton and why he's significant to Harvard County, as well as Patricia Cole, who's the Executive Director of the Colored School. So it should be interesting. Again, that's Monday, June nineteenth, from twelve to four PM, and that will be hosted at the American Legion. Council President, that's all.
Sir.
Councilmember Booker.
Council President Ringsacker, thank you for the opportunity. I did have the great opportunity on May the twenty-first to join Councilmember Shenegas out to the St. Patrick's Church in Havity Grace to give the hundred and seventy-fifth year proclamation, and that was well received and sent through mass, brought back some memories, and then the proclamation was well received. So I appreciate being a part of that. Thank you for the invitation. First Friday was excellent, not only with the police support, with DPW. We couldn't do the things that we do without that type of support. So a huge thank you. I also want to get a Torch Run t-shirt, just for the record, you know, if anyone cares to listen to that. I want to thank this, as I will always do every night that I'm up here, I want to thank the Susquehanna Horse Company, the Havity Grace Police Department, EMT, and the first responders for everything that they do, keeping our citizens safe. And that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. On Tuesday, the sixth, the twinning group will be meeting, and they'll have the initial meeting for people who are interested in going in September to Mumbles as our delegation going. The visit will be from the seventeenth to the twenty-third of September, two thousand twenty-three. So if you're interested, please reach out to Deb Stathis and get more information. They're also going to be having a potluck on the twenty-second of June. And the other thing I want to let everybody know about is, this is the wrong one that I brought up, but APG is having a career fair. If you're interested in information about it, please go to Facebook and Google Aberdeen Proving Ground, and you'll find information there. There's a link there. We call it, it's an application called Yellow, Y-E-L-L-O, and you can click on it, and that's how you can register your name and your resume to be considered for job applications. It's for the entire month of June. So it's a great opportunity to get a job at Aberdeen Proving Ground. And with that, I wish you all a very good night and welcome aboard. Good day.
Sir, all right, last one is me, and I'm not gonna bore anybody. Also welcome, sir. It's a pleasure to meet you. And I'm just gonna move right into the closing, the president's presiding officer's oral statement for closing a meeting. Apparently, I can't even do that. I'm tired. It's late. So under the Open Meetings Act, General Provision, Article three dash three zero five, make a motion to go into closed session upon a German of the open session on Monday, May, sorry, Monday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-three, to consider the following matters. Number one, to consult the city attorney about pending or potential litigation. This meeting will be closed under General Provisions, Articles, Section three dash three zero five, so Section B seven and B eight. Number seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Number eight, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The reason for closing this meeting is communication with the city attorney regarding legal advice or of potential or pending litigation is entitled to confidentiality under the eternity client, eternity client privilege. The city will not resume open session after the closed session, and votes, if any, will be recorded in public at the council meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. And that's my motion, sir.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President. Do I have a second?
Sir, second.
Seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to go into closed session at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion to go to closed session carries four, one, and the affirmative. Any other questions, Council President, or comments?
No, sir. Make a motion to close the regular meeting.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn by the Council President. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to adjourn meeting carries five zero, an affirmative. The time is now ten forty-eight. Thank you very much, everyone, and we'll see you at, see at the next council meeting, June twentieth. Thank you.